So you want to be, that's just like your, your new, I know. So to the left you have.
Can I stand there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Look on that.
Okay. What's going to raise, what's more prepared for you? The new Sawyer headline that we're experiencing. I thought was nothing.
Yep, agenda.
I'm so mad. Like, they're not in half of the ground, no, they are.
Yes.
All right. Meeting is back in session. It is 7:31. We are back out of executive session starting the public meeting. Everybody please rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which is standing in one nation, under one God, and with this call, we continue to serve.
We have several special presentations today. We will start with the Special Services Director from Mrs. Johnson. Do you want to start with?
Yeah, let's start with Dr. Johnson.
Sure.
Well, I don't know where she stands there.
Oh, you're going to come down there. Oh, that works out well.
Good, okay. That's good. Oh, thank you. Yep. There we go. I'm Carol Ann Tredesa. I teach at Valley Middle School. I teach sixth grade science and I teach eighth grade science and I teach the honors biology class for eighth graders as well. And I had the luxury and the absolute pleasure of being able to attend Space Camp in Huntsville, Alabama. Showing hands, how many of you ever as a kid like dreamed of going to Space Camp? For me, I was all about all of the shuttle missions and I remember watching The Challenger when I was in sixth grade and just being devastated. I mean, it's amazing things being able to send somebody to space and how much training goes into it and, you know, things can go wrong and, you know, learning from mistakes and the engineering and the science behind it. So I was really, really happy when a parent of two of my students, a sixth grader and an eighth grader, sent out information about Honeywell's program for educators at Space Academy. It's called the HESA program. And she sent it out saying, you know, if you're interested in applying, you can apply and you can go for a week to Space Camp. And I thought for a little while, well, I have my kids but they're getting older and I always wanted to go to Space Camp. So why not give it a try? I had to fill out a very lengthy application. I had to write a whole bunch of essays. And that was last, I want to say October or November I had to reply. And then in January, I put together a website too, so I'll be showing you. In January, I got the congratulations, you've been accepted to go to Space Camp. Oh, my gosh, like really? I'm 44 years old and I'm going to Space Camp finally. So I was kind of in my glory. And then, you know, you get prepared and you get ready. And so before leaving, I decided I wanted to keep my kids in the loop, my students in the loop. And so I said, you know, I'm going to put together, since we have all these Google things, I'm going to put together a Google site and try it out. Let's see how this works and hook it up to my Google Classroom for all my kids. And then every day, I'm sure I'll have plenty of time while at Space Camp, I will keep this thing up and running and I will update it. And I actually did. So every day I'd go back to my dorm, because we stayed at the University of Alabama Huntsville, and I would go back there and I would type furiously and putting pictures down, the pictures and get it up and running. So try to go through some of the highlights as much as I can. So the first page just is my acceptance letter and just explaining that that's where I was going to go so that if any parents were wondering, you know, why is Mrs. Andrew easy here? They would be able to say, hey, check it out, she went to Space Camp. So day one came along and I had to fly. Interestingly enough, I had never, ever flown alone in my life. I had never drone to Newark Airport in my life alone. I always had somebody driving me, car service, whatever. Here I am like, okay, I'm getting lost, but I did. And so like one of the threads that I had for my students is, don't be afraid to try something new. I mean, here I am at my age, taking my first flight alone. So, you know, give everything a shot. So when I got down, oh, I should probably be pointing here.
That does not matter.
When I got to Alabama, they had a welcome committee. They would shuttle us back to the University of Alabama. That was our dorm where we lived. They had a big welcome banner. And I met up with a few people. We took a long walk around the campus seeing some beautiful artwork. I had also never lived at a dorm in my life. I lived at home and I commuted to Trenton State College. So this, this whole experience for me was like, oh, man, what am I going to be sold into? They also had some interesting like historic markers that we found. We found some grave sites of Confederate soldiers and some Revolutionary War soldiers and, you know, so we had a little bit of history going on there as we were walking around. And then they gave us a quick little drive over to the Rocket Center where we decided we were going to be silly and take some interesting photos outside of Pathfinder, you know, holding it up and doing interesting things. So that was my first night. We didn't actually do any training the first night. Pathfinder, a little fun fact about it, is the first shuttle that was built, but it is not a shuttle. It was only built for the dimensions of how they were going to build all the other shuttles. So they basically described it as an empty soda can. That's all it is. Nothing else in it. It's all hollowed out, but it's still pretty awesome. Okay, so the first day, the big slogan that they told us is, there's no tired like Space Camp tired, and they were 100% correct. We had to be up on a shuttle at 7:15 a.m. and we didn't get back to the dorms until around 8:15 and 30 every single night. You were out the whole day. Honeywell was kind enough to, I mean, they paid for everything. They paid for my flight. They paid for my housing. They paid for three full meals a day that were buffet style. I put on four pounds in one week. It was wonderful. So they gave us a backpack, a hat, two t-shirts, a bath towel because we were going to do some water events. They paid for everything for us. 2,000 people applied for this opportunity, 2,000, and only 200 to 300 people were accepted. So when I heard that going into this experience, I went, wow, that's, that's like an honor to be able to do this. We were divided into teams up at the top. Oops, I went too far. Still too far. Okay, well, in that top corner, and you'll see my team a lot, we were Teams Vesta. All of the teams were named after the International Space Station sections. So there was Team Harmony, Teams Vesta, there were a couple others. And we were with them the entire time. We did all our challenges together, all the missions together. My roommate, who's just got cut off over there, she was from Oklahoma. Another roommate of mine was from New Jersey. So we had like a suite where we shared rooms. Not like you ever got to talk too much when you were there because you were exhausted by the end of the day, but you got to hang out with them all day. The blonde woman was our leader for Teams Vesta. She took us where we needed to be. She said, enjoy this as if you were a student. You're not acting like a teacher. Act like a kid. Experience it like a kid. See the enjoyment and the excitement of science again from the eyes of a kid and just go with it. And that was really good advice for all of us because you want to feel like a kid again in order to see how you can engage them and how to get them involved and how to make them love your topic. They had us do a lot of team photos. We had a professional photographer following us around the entire time. So at different points, they would, you know, be taking pictures, group shots. They would tell us, get into the suit, get out of the suit, get into the suit, get out of the suit. And they would take group shots. The pictures that follow after that are where the student campers can actually stay. So you can send your child to Space Camp and that's where they would stay. I was a little excited. We had the moon rock over there. They had shuttles. They had all sorts, oh, thank you. All sorts of paraphernalia in the museum and you were able to go tour the museum lots of times. We also got to meet an astronaut. We got to meet Larry Lucas. He's in the red shirt. He gave us a speech and he kind of tailored it towards teachers, which was really nice because there were other students there. He really was speaking to the teachers about how important we are in the eyes of our, our kids and inspiring them and moving them on. And that was like a common thread that a lot of the speakers had. So it was, it was nice hearing that from writers and astronauts and different people. They also had some, a couple of rides there. So Force Accelerator is the one that you like get pressed against the side of the wall because it spins really fast. So you can feel some G forces and they had a drop ride. And I'm all about rides, my family, like we love rides. So you stick me on something, I'm like, woo, okay. All right, next one. That's not real, I'm real stupid, sorry. That was just a little mock-up, but hey, you had to get into that thing. So we, on this day, got to meet Ed Buckbee. Oops, a little love right there. Ed Buckbee, he worked with the Apollo, he's the Apollo astronaut. And, oops. He wrote the book Real Space Cowboys. He gave us a nice talk about it. And then they told us that he would sign a book for us and dedicate it so, mine is to my son and my daughter. So if you want to pass it around, you can take a look. He was telling us a lot about the history and where space is going and moving onward. That's my team right there with Ed Buckbee. He's also the person who created Space Camp. So it was a nice thing to hear from somebody who, he wanted students and he wanted kids to love space and be interested in space. That little video, we don't have to watch that video, but if you get a chance, because I know I sent the web link to you so you can check it out. It's about the new space, the SLS system. I remember when they announced that NASA was going to put and shut down the shuttle system, the traditional shuttle that I was used to. I was like, wow, I guess NASA's not planning on doing anything in the future because the way they just announced they're retiring all the shuttles. I'm like, oh, that's really a shame. I really loved that. It's because they're changing. They're no longer using the shuttle design, so they're moving onward. So that's something that I can bring to my classroom and talk to the kids and say, hey, check out the new designs. And that video is a really great one. They already have pieces being made and their, their eyes are on Mars and they're, they're fully in gear to get rockets launched and get people to Mars. They gave us design challenges. We had to design cars that were powered off of balloons. They had us do a low ropes course where we had to do different challenges. In fact, one of the challenges we did there, the day I got back, I did it with my, my classes. It was a team building activity where they had to work together to accomplish a task. And some of them, some of them got a little frustrated by it. And it was to show how you have to work as a team, you have to communicate. You know, too many chefs spoil the broth kind of deal. And some of the kids got it real fast and some of the kids had to work through it. So it was exciting that I was able to come back to school and do something with them right away and say, hey, I did this at Space Camp. And they were excited about. We built rockets. And we launched those rockets. Our rocket landed in a tree. So you want to see the one sticks bouncing a little bit? It's one sticks to grab you. So you feel like you're on the moon. You want to play a little that one? Maybe go a little bit hands away because. Yeah, it's just, and if you. Let's see, go, go about like 30 seconds for the test that's happening. So this is to kind of give you the sensation of one stick grabbing pulling on you. And I bought a Groove GoPro, leaving up to this, so I have my friends taping this instead of having it on my head bouncing around. It would be a little weird. So you're suspended from the ceiling and then you have to try to push off. And it's a very, very eerie sensation as you're trying to move and get around all this contraption. I think that's enough of that. All right. So that's stuff that they had the kids do and I was able to get up there and do that. The museum had different things. At the bottom, there was another link. It's called Math Alive. So there was a lot of math as well where they had cameras posed around you and then they would count down and you'd do a pose and they would take all the shots and put together this really cool three-dimensional image for you. So that was on day three. Day four, I was completely and utterly exhausted, but still having fun. I was still waking up, by the way, at 4:00 a.m. because they're one hour behind us and I'm usually up at 5:00 a.m. So every morning I'd wake and be like, it's time to get up. And I'd look, oh, it's 4:00 a.m. And I'd work on my site a little bit more. So this was my favorite activity. This was the multi-axis trainer so that you can feel what it's like to be in space doing a tumble roll. And if you want to play a little lab one maybe. Again, I'm a thrill seeker. You stick me on anything, I'm like, fair game. So this one, I was very excited. You could get a job, probably give me a second, maybe 30 seconds. I really wanted to have this gentleman, I wanted to go on that to take a look at scenes here with everybody like two minute rides. And the other person right next to me was giving like 45 seconds and they were quick. I was like, ah. So I kept going because when I was waiting, he was like, so that I could sit and heal around. Once it gets going, you're up there. You don't know which direction you're going at all. And so there we go. It was fun. I was on that thing for two cool minutes. That's why the videos were cut off because I had my friend taping me and somehow it stopped. So I got two minutes of me like going nuts on that. It was great. And then some of the pictures that are underneath it.
Wait, just to get away from the video.
Oh, there we go. Those were by the professional photographer that they sent. They had a mock-up of the International Space Station, so we were able to go there and see different things. Pretend we're looking out into space. Bathroom, the workout. We did a mission. We did two missions. We did a mission to the moon. We failed really miserably on the mission to the moon. It was, it was very stressful, a very stressful mission. I'm not even sure if we landed the shuttle. But it's, it's a learning experience. You only had a half hour to learn how to land the shuttle. You know, they're like, okay, go. And some of my partners, the woman to the left of me in that bottom picture, she's from Poland. There were 35 countries, 45 states represented. So educators from around the world. And the woman to the right, she's from Vietnam. And so they were on my team and we were able to talk a lot. So not only did we hear like the STEM issues, we also had a lot of social studies going on. We were talking about cultures. We were talking about what it's like to teach in other countries, expectations, schedules, schools, what schools are like. And it was really fascinating. And we did some gift exchanges too. So I have two bracelets. These were both given to me by people from Mexico. They did like little gift exchanges along the way as well, which was sweet. The woman from Poland, she kept bringing us food. We had Polish sausages that were like cured and we had Polish pretzels and we had Polish candies. And every time we'd see her in the morning, she's like, Polish whatever. And we're like, yes. So it was nice. They had a rock wall climbing, you know? I'm not really good at heights, but I said, sure, let's do this. And we climbed the wall. This was us programming our, it's called a Raspberry Pi. It was a computer to put in the rocket. They're cheap. They're about, I'm going to say $20 to $30 for this computer. It's an actual computer. And you can hook it up to the screen. You can hook it up to a mouse and you can program it so that you can stick it into a rocket, launch the rocket, figure out how high it went, how fast it went. And we put it on our rocket and it landed on the tree. So we don't know how high or how far our rocket went. There is the rocketry. That's what we named it, the rocketry. Because it had, we went to look for our rocket and they were all rockets just hanging like Christmas decorations in it. I don't know why that's there. Okay, this was another design activity that we had. All right. I'm sorry I'm talking so long. It's just very exciting stuff. I loved it. Every second is like, if I could go back, I'd be back in a heartbeat. This is our, I was going for Father's Day. Talk about, we have a lot of guilt going on. So Father's Day comes along, I'm like, oh, hanging my head in shame as I go to Mars and do the Mars mission. We got to act as if we were the first people landing on Mars and our job was to transport, in the bottom corner, there's pictures of me and another, there we go. We had to transport and unload gas from our lander to our place where we were going to be living on Mars. One of my favorite classes was origami. And they went into how origami, there's a whole branch of physics designed origami in mind. Again, something I was interested in as a kid, you know, hold my little favorite things. The video is really cool because there are scientists who focus on origami to figure out how you can get massive structures into space in the least amount of space possible. So they use origami. So they take these giant structures, they figure out how they can fold them up into a teeny tiny little space, stick it into a rocket, launch it, and then open it in space, which I found incredibly fascinating. So we took some origami, that structure, that pink and gray structure actually is folded one direction and then if you pop it, unfolds into another direction. And then if you're goofy, you can, oops. Where is it? You can wear it on your head like a crown. There, wearing it on my head like a crown. So we had some fun with that one. That's one I would like to try with my students. You know, figuring out how you can take little pieces, put them together, fold it flat and see how you can spread it out. We had replicated water landing where we had to land as if we were in a helicopter and we had to rescue ourselves. I was appointed the person who is supposed to freak out during your landing and everybody else on board has to rescue you. I'm not a good actress. So when we got in there, we're like, the guy pulled me aside. He's like, you have to act like, you know, you need to get out of this right away and your team is going to have to save you. So they had to like take me and shove my head underwater and get me out of, out of there in time. I had that on my GoPro on my helmet, but I didn't post it because I'm a really bad actress. It's kind of embarrassing to be honest. That was, we were strapped to a harness for a parachute, put on like, I want to say it was like 45 feet tall. And we were pushed off the top and we did a simulated water landing. That was a lot of fun. But I was a tad bit scared because as they were like hooking me up, I find all my heights and I'm standing on a box on top of it and the woman is hooking me up and something fell. And I was like, oh. And she goes, oops. You don't, you don't want to hear oops before you work plummeting off. And she's like, oh, no, I didn't hook that one up. It's okay. I will get that one. But I was a little freaked out by that. That's me smiling after I realized, okay, I'm hooked up. I'm good. And some of the videos, I don't know again why they're not working. Okay, day six. This was the last day we were there. It was my mom's 80th birthday. So I missed Father's Day. It was like the double whammy. I had to call my mom and be like, hi, you come in Alabama. Hope you're having a great 80th birthday. I'm feeling so guilty. So these were some of the friends I met from Vietnam and Thailand and the Philippines. That's my breakfast over there. They serve this chicken every morning. Chicken mist, yes. It is really good. That's where I got my four pounds from. So that's in front of the Rocket Center. We had to design, to design a lander to land an egg and then roll it someplace. So that's us with our little contraption. This is us with the author. I don't know if you saw October Sky. He wrote Rocket Boys, Homer Hickam. He also signed this for us. They gave us all these names too. So they gave us the books. They gave us just everything. They gave us free reign of all the photos that they took. They said, download anything you want, any size you want. They're, they're yours to take. He was very funny, great presenter. I really enjoyed his presentation. They took us to the IMAX Theater. We watched A Beautiful Planet. And then we had our graduation. It was like a full-blown graduation. This is the entire class all posed in the Rocket Center. And they had a big graduation where they gave us our diplomas. And that's us holding, that's my team, holding it in the auditorium. And then the last page was the day of just reflections. I missed the graduation. I'm not going to be a great teacher. It's like three strikes, I'm out. But I have a good website at least, you know, so. This was all the United States people in front of Pathfinder. So some lessons I had for the students. Number one, just because you might feel different, maybe you have different interests. Maybe you are like really into building things or you're into Legos or you're into a sport that is different than other people. It's okay. Like embrace that. Embrace the differences you have and you'll find people who are like you. There were a lot of teachers who were just as crazy as I was to be there and to be excited to be there. You're never too old to try something new. So I gave them a couple lessons. Those teachers in that one picture, they're all from New Jersey. We had one of the larger groups represented, probably because we have the Honeywell right here, I'm thinking. Because Honeywell pays for it. Their employees actually contribute to sending teachers. They didn't explain how or why or how many people, but that like blew my mind. Like here's, here are people working in a company who feel so strongly about the need for good science education that they want to get teachers this type of experience. And that just blew my mind. Don't give up because you failed at something. My roommate, Michelle, she, this was her third time applying. Her third year straight flying, she finally got accepted. There was somebody from Kenya who applied seven times in order to get to this program and he was finally accepted. So don't give up. Just because you failed at it once, you learn from it. You get better. You try something. Try a different approach. Don't take for granted the little things in your life. While we were taking this one picture, we were standing outside and the sun was setting. And there was this one teacher, grown woman, who looked to the side and she saw a lightning bug and she's like, what's that? She's from California. They don't have lightning bugs in California. She's like, what's that? And somebody in the street was like, it's just a part of my lightning bug. She's like, why is it doing that? And they explained to her. She's like, I think I'm going to cry. Because she had never seen like something that small. So like those little things, never take them for granted because that just, oh, thanks for putting that picture up already. Always have a sense of humor. Like we were like goofing around, laughing. We would take silly pictures here and there because, you know, we're trying to be like kids and we were having fun and living it up. The girl in the jean jacket, she's from New York. The girl with the hat, she's also from New Jersey. She's in Brick. And then the woman in the center is my roommate from Oklahoma. And then there's no place like home. So my daughter, they had an American Girl space suit. How can you pay us to buy one of those? So I offered that and I got my son a NASA football, you know, throw around the yard a little bit. And then my bio kids, they actually put together like a gift for me. They know I like puns. So that t-shirt up there is a t-shirt that they actually made for me that says something about all of the good puns are gone. And they also put together reflections of the year, things that we did instead. And they made this beautiful sign for me that I made and I laminated it and I'm going to hang it in my room that they had made for me. So now remember, you know, your roots, where you came from and always go back to them. So that was my experience at Space Camp. Really, really well worth it. They actually offer Space Camp for blind students. So if you know somebody who is blind, they offer scholarships for students who are blind and they have the whole experience, everything that they do for that. So they offer it for all different ages. They offer it for teachers, for kids, blind students. So it was a great, great experience. And I just want to say thanks for the opportunity because I had to do this during the school year. That was the week that they did. So getting that release time was a godsend. I'm incredibly grateful for Honeywell for paying for everything. And I'm grateful that you were able to say, okay, go, get coverage in your classes, you know, get that professional development because it does make a difference for teachers to have those opportunities. You know, you get reinvigorated. I've been doing this for 20 years. And, you know, to have that little like zap again, it's exciting. It's fun, you know? It gets you, gets you thinking, how, what else can I do to get my kids learning science? So thank you very much for listening to me for, I put my talk for a long time. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Going to the next one for Special Services.
Okay. All right. Thank you for having me tonight. Grace Johnson, Director of Special Services. And I'm giving you a presentation on our recent parent survey for the Department of Special Services. I'm going to go over the background and how we developed it and the results of that survey. So we developed this survey in the fall of this past four years. And it involved multiple stakeholder employees. The child study team was involved in the question development. Board members were involved and the chairs. And we went through the Special Parent Advisory Committee to really develop questions that we felt would assassinate. assess what we're trying to do in our department and get some good feedback from parents about how we're doing so this was also a thirteen question survey and there was also voluntary comments that people could provide on each question and generally and some of the goals of our survey where we were trying to assess our department's customer service goals we have a customer service philosophy that we can try to follow in our department one of the big things we did is we tried to respond to all parents acknowledge all parents communication within twenty hours so that was something we wanted to look at and then we dove deeper into the questions to just get more feedback from parents we wanted to find out how we're doing with implementing technology from a parent's perspective technologies in the IEP are we following it do they feel confident in what we're doing also we wanted to assess overall parent satisfaction with the IEP process and program and our Special Parent Advisory Committee was looking for some general we wanted a global input on what people were looking for for future parent trainings and ultimately we wanted to use the results to inform what we do in the future so let's see so the survey was sent to all parents and students with disabilities we sent it electronically through the School Messenger Program we sent reminders for several weeks it was advertised over Twitter and we actually were very happy we received a hundred and forty-six parents who responded and that's out of a possible three hundred and twenty and that's actually good statistically it's there's a ninety-nine percent confidence level that these results are generalizable so we felt really good about the amount of people that responded and they also provided a lot of voluntary comments so I'm gonna go through the questions that we came up with and basically what we did was we looked at all of these questions they had thirteen questions and then we tried to see where our areas for growth so that we could develop goals for next year so for our first question it was the child study team case managers acknowledging calls and emails within twenty-four hours we've had this goal for a few years and now we really wanted to get some feedback on how parents feel we're doing with this and came out seventy-eight point seven percent were frequently or very frequently and then about a little over eleven percent almost both parents were not feeling that we were acknowledging that quickly and then with the comments on this one majority of the comments were positive for teachers it was even a little bit higher eighty-four point nine percent of the respondents said that teachers were acknowledging the calls and emails within twenty-four hours we chose the word acknowledged because if the question or concern is something that's gonna take some time to respond we didn't want it to be we thought people might not read it properly we said respond they might expect everything to have been addressed and we just wanted people to know we got your concern so that's what these questions are about let's see so yeah so eight percent over eight percent said this was occasional or rarely happening related service providers some people provide speech therapy occupational therapy so it's a related service but it's not the purpose of your child's program there was a high amount that said not applicable for this which would make sense because there are quite a few students that don't receive these services so it was not applicable forty-three percent indicated that but then forty-eight point six percent did say they were getting that acknowledgement and then a little over seven percent said they were not within twenty-four okay so this one was for me as the Director of Special Services I wanted to see do parents feel that I'm getting back to them within twenty-four hours so that I hold the same goal it's just what we try to do as a department and again this one I wanted to know if thirty-nine point seven percent said not applicable and I felt that's a good sign because it means there's a large percentage of parents who don't feel they need to come to the Director of Special Services they feel they need and their question is being addressed at the school level fifty-five percent said frequently or very frequently and a little over almost five percent said occasionally or rarely so then everyone is dig deeper not just acknowledging what are we doing after that what's more more depth what are we doing so we wanted to know do they feel that questions or problems are being addressed by the child study team eighty-four point nine percent did strongly agree or agree almost a little under ten percent did not agree and five percent said not applicable case manager initiates communication so this was an important part of the survey we wanted to see about more of the proactive so a lot of that most questions in the beginning are more how are we reacting when someone contacts us but we wanted to see how did the parents feel if we're the ones reaching out we're initiating things so we had a few questions that had to do with that and this is one of them my child's case manager initiates communication with me about my child's progress and or needs so this percentage was a little lower you can see from the others so we did see this as an area for growth sixty-nine point nine percent agreed with this and then we had over twenty-six percent not agreeing with us so we do see this as an area for for us to look at for our goals the school team monitors progress and initiates changes when needed so again this is proactive rather than the parents feeling like they're coming to us if we're responding it's us coming forward first and this was similar with sixty-nine point nine percent agreeing or strongly agreeing and then over twenty percent not agreeing on this so that was again the proactive piece where we saw more of a difference this one we're very happy with because it's something we really stress a lot in our department parents feel that their input is considered and included when developing the IEP there's even a section legally in the IEP that specifically says parental concerns so we're to be documenting this in our IP at all times and we always stress that when we're when we're meeting and child studies talking about our practices best practices we always stress making sure your the parents are feeling heard their input is being considered in the IEP and so we got ninety-one point eight percent agreeing with this so we felt pretty good about that still there's seven percent over seven percent disagreeing this is the third one that addressed the proactive piece school team often sorry school team offers other strategies and solutions when current strategies are not working so again that's us coming forward first rather than perhaps the parent requesting something being changed in the IEP and that sort of thing and that was sixty-nine point nine percent again agreeing with this and then over seventy percent not agreeing okay so a lot of times in our meetings a really good IEP you'll have a really good discussion and maybe parents are asking for questions or advice what can they do different do at home to support what they're doing in school so this was a question to see how parents feel we're addressing that in those meetings and they said seventy-six percent agree that they're getting that advice and then sixteen point five percent do not agree with this this is a question we've developed to assess as I mentioned in the beginning how we're doing with our assistive technology this is definitely an evolving process we've been providing professional development for staff technology is a district initiative and the Chromebooks and all the different technology that we use Google but there's the assistive technology that we hear you know we feel we need to continue to work towards and we wanted to see how parents are feeling about our implementation of assistive technology so that we do things like speech to text or audio books or just different things that are gonna assist their child with a disability in the classroom and this one again fifty-four percent not applicable so not every child needs assistive technology so the parents indicated that here with the not applicable but we had thirty-seven point seven percent agree or strongly agree that we are implementing technology and there was seven percent oh sorry a little over eight percent of not agreeing with us so something we still need to continue to work on we continue to provide PD in this area and try to also just have uniform technology that people understand that we're using for different needs so that people can understand it and implement it efficiently and effectively this is how are we communicating in the meeting do parents leave the meeting feeling like they understand their child services in the program so we asked parents do they feel that way when they need the IEP meeting eighty-seven percent agree or strongly agree that they do then you have eleven over eleven percent not feeling that way so so we are communicating but there are still some families that feel maybe it's not clear to them always with all their services that they're getting and then overall satisfaction with the Child's Special Education Program we got eighty-seven point seven percent strongly agree or agree and then we had eleven almost twelve percent not agreeing with this question and then mentioned in the beginning we had a CPAC question to see what kind of training parents are interested and we had a hundred and nine responses for this it was an optional question in case parents weren't interested in the topic to be provided and we had a ready discussion the most popular training or instruction is social skills and behavior interventions so we are gonna be keeping this information handy when the Special Parent Advisory Committee is meeting and planning for future parent workshops one thing that was like instant gratification was the OT sensory writing we had quite a few parents writing they wanted an OT sensory workshop but we had already planned that this was done in January and then the parent survey rather than parent presentation on sensory was already scheduled for March so we were able to provide that workshop which was great okay so from all of that information we wanted to prioritize where is our greatest area for growth at this point and so you know we did do this with the child study team with staff so that everyone could get a global picture of what all the responses were what you know we still need to keep working on our consumer service and our responding within twenty-four hours it's not a hundred percent but what areas were weaker that we want to try to target for future and those areas were the initiating the proactive type of behaviors so CST initiating communication with parents and the school team initiating changes and offering other strategies when needed so we developed some goals for the CST for next year based off of these areas so one of our goals is so what we do now is when we at the beginning of the year parents get a letter in the parent portal that tells them who their child's case manager is the person that's gonna be their point of contact for the child study team and their IEP development and all that and that's their communication that's the initial communication but there's not it's not a these are letters through the parent portal so we want to do something a little more personal a little more proactive reaching out so what we're going to do is by the end of September on top of that we want to add that one hundred percent of parents and students on the assigned case load will have another phone call or email by the end of September so that you can open up that discussion more personally rather than a letter then we want to follow up in January with another we're reaching out to every parent on the case load so you know it's kind of rather than just responding to the calls responding to the questions not always is it the parent you know it might be we're identifying things as well but this way we make sure we reach every parent on the case load that's what we want to do and then the third one has to do more with the school team piece so the case managers are going to attend grade level meetings where the teachers are meeting once a marking period and become informed of more informed of student needs and offer strategies as appropriate so that we're generating the strategies and being more proactive that's our third goal you know right now this may happen often but we want it to be consistent every team member is joining us and hopefully including those areas the proactive areas so that's our third goal and that's pretty much it do you have questions or anything yes
on the email responses twenty-four hour benchmark I guess it's you know it's it's hard to be perfect and have a hundred percent of people happy I'm just wondering if you know if a parent emails somebody on a Friday afternoon and maybe that person didn't look at it till Monday so so that you have forty-eight hours and also there's a lot of people that don't read me it you know they might have gotten response and they don't read their email every day
so they might not have
so yeah I mean I mean I like tight tight time control on on email responses very important business but I'm just you know you just don't know what the all the dynamics were with that those those responses
correct or someone was out sick or something like that sometimes but for the twenty-four hours I do we do say it doesn't include weekends so if it's on a Friday at three o'clock probably not going to get a response till Monday I don't we don't expect staff to you know get back to them on the weekend but it is twenty-four hours in schools and sessions
okay
I think it said I think I went through those questions kind of quickly but I think we put it in schools and sessions
hey could you go back as I you went pretty quick to the beginning what was the percentage of the parents that participated in the survey
it was a hundred and forty-six parents a hundred and forty-six
out of a possible three twenty
yes
yeah you know it's I know you can't go out there and twist everybody's arm but it's the amount of time we spent talking about special ed and the money that goes into it it's a very important element of our our school district disappointing enough to see a higher turnout by the parents participating in the survey
I'm kind of surprised too I thought if there was an engaged group of parents it would be this this group I was a little surprised it was under fifty percent
that's very good
yeah but again with this with this demographic we would know it would be up these are people who would be I think would be very very interested in having in having their opinions heard
we definitely advertised it on case managers also remind the parents of it when they have personal interactions with them and whatnot so
it's social media
we did Twitter
how did you deal with did you send it out to both parents of of students or did you just send it out to
we sent the email
okay and how did you how does the math work out if like one parent has two or four kids in programs
that's something that we did not oh okay so if they're assessing multiple organs it didn't ask you like how many students how many children you had those kind of questions
one person had like three kids they would have gotten one email
oh yeah
yeah
who is the messenger
the the one thing I would suggest for future and I know some of the teachers did it because at the CPAC meeting I know some of the teachers individually sent out to just their parents emails I know just from other organizations I know we do it in soccer where if it comes out from the entire organization or from the entire district it kind of sometimes gets lost in the mix with a bunch of emails if it comes directly from a teacher or somebody you know personally maybe a CST manager that's a little more impactful but I do think I know we advertise heavily on this I mean as a parent who has students in the program I could tell you I got a lot of emails I mean we probably came down and said my wife and I doing it the last day before it was due but that's just natural I'm sure if you watched the survey you saw them spike right before that's just pretty typical but
every time we sent it out we would get a lot of people who were responding so we did get responses each time yeah that probably something especially to know that we talked about having that email communication from the CST the parents get more used to getting that response by email to their DPD manager
is there I mean and it was clear as you were going through it I'm glad to hear you guys felt the same thing the reactive is there I mean it seems like you know not a hundred percent we certainly have opportunity to get a little better but certainly much better than the proactive you know questions I saw some of the action goals you guys talked about how many students does a CST case manager have
it depends but it's usually in the forties-ish around hover jam somewhere in the forties
because I wonder if like I mean once again email I get hundreds if not a thousand emails a day I mean getting an email is like eh I just don't know if like reaching out could could we have them involved in the parent teacher conferences is there just not enough of them is there
they do attend parent teacher conferences but there's definitely not enough where you could have a case manager at every parent teacher conference they definitely all have a schedule and they go to camp you know they go to the conferences kind of prioritize based on maybe if it was requested by a parent or you know depending on the needs of the student they differentiate prioritize the conferences that they attend they do attend them but yeah it would be hard to do that for single one I mean, they could probably do it by like fall and spring and go to different conferences depending on the, depending on the year. But yeah, it is, you know, definitely having family students is something that should differentiate.
And that's something that I've noticed being involved in, first of all, having multiple students, but also having students that have multiple teachers. Parent teacher conferences are very, very difficult, or even just that, that initial back to school night is very, very, parent teacher conference is a little difficult because you have a scheduled time. But back to school night, I don't know if we can work on trying, maybe that's an opportunity to kind of get them in the rotation where they're there a little bit more. Cause it, it's extremely difficult if you've got multiple students and your students have multiple teachers to try to get to everybody. I mean, usually it's like a five minute or a two minute, let me pop in at the end of the night, or can I catch you right before you leave? We're there from the minute it starts to the minute it ends and usually walking out the door with them after the time's over. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for helping out with that. Maybe back to school night's a good chance to kind of get that interaction a little bit more. I just don't know how you logistically set it up.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's definitely something, I know sometimes case managers will go into the classrooms and just be in there because parents, that's what parents are made.
Yeah.
So sometimes I have seen case managers doing that. I don't know if it's a cup of practice, but it's something, you know, maybe it could be done more or more discussed, cause that's how we should handle it. Um, to get them more visible. Cause you're right, it is, it's a tight schedule.
Do we have enough case managers?
Well, we, we've increased them a little bit over the past, you know, three years. We had, we had, uh, six and a half, so we increased it to seven. Um, so we did increase the one position a little bit. I mean, the numbers are similar, we, you know, we look across the county and we look at, we compare, they're similar to a lot of districts, um, in this area. And some are, are much higher actually, but, you know.
Much higher with more students with.
There are, there's a few that are really high, surprising how high their case loads are when we compare across the district. But, uh, for the most part, I'd say we're pretty much kind of similar to, to our county. When compared with the other districts.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
You guys can stay where you are unless you want to turn your act.
I want to get my notebook, I'll go back out.
So this is a fairly short presentation than we have shortly coming up. It's just important to always recap our goals, tie them to the strategic plan, and then come up with our suggestions for goals for next year. So here's our strategic plan. We can actually click on that link, Patrick, should take you to it. So everybody here calls our strategic plan, we spend a lot of time on it. Every, most resolutions, any resolutions that are applicable to one of those four things have a reference number. Every time you pass one, you'll see a reference number, it's a goal, the objective that it applies to. That was a suggestion from Charlene. And, um, so our strategic plan is something that is, is being lived by in, in the district. Okay, back here, we're going to go to the next thing. I don't know if I have to do it or. You gotta go back to the tab on top. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There we go. So our district goals from twenty seventeen eighteen was to continue to work towards greater sustainability and green practices aligned with sustainable Jersey schools. And, uh, we are going to work towards a silver certification. It's a fairly large process, not sure if it'll be something we can do in one year. Uh, we were told that there is no such thing as a district bronze certification. We had first heard that there was, and then we heard there isn't. But technically, they did say you are bronze certified if all of your schools are certified. So we are bronze certified, clap for that. Um, so we're going to work on the silver certification. And number two was to develop a sustainable planning facilities that eliminates rentals, temporary structures, substandard and too used instructional space implemented over multi, multi-year periods. So obviously, our offices are now upstairs and we have awarded our contract to Powell Pro and the work is actually, has actually started already. And, uh, I will let Ms. Dr. Collins talk about the two educational goals.
So number three was working on increasing our number of enrichment offerings and both, primarily the elementary school, because we now have that master degree period, which I've already reported out, that we added coding and electronic computers and more STEM offerings and so forth. And in the middle school, we also offered a few additional courses too. And then our fourth goal was to look at the responsive classroom. And as we've been reported out, River View is now, uh, had received the state school of, uh, good culture and climate and then went on to present at the national level and is now working towards national certification. So we definitely have implemented those strategies every morning. Some of the, if you as a parent have gone in, you've gotten to witness the morning meetings and that's happening in every classroom, every day. The elementary school and three times a week in the advisory periods at the middle school. So we definitely are, are working on those strategies and we're seeing results. We did report out on our, as one of the merit goals, looking at the actual client survey that came through the Y D A and it went up in all those areas, the students feeling involved in the school and part of the school. And staff feeling satisfied, we're happy with that.
Okay, so our, we have a couple of topics here that we thought as a team would apply to our, to our strategic plans and things that we can do going forward. And the first one was to obtain future ready school status, I put the website link there. Those of you that are not aware of what that is, is, it's really a technology-based program that's run out of N G I T in cooperation with the New Jersey Department of Education. It's, uh, future ready schools, newjersey.org. It's a, uh, it's definitely applicable to our, our goals, one A, D, and C. Second one is to increase achievement for all students who are not meeting grade level benchmarks. So all of our students who are not following and, and coming up to their A's level and grade level, um, except, uh, expected achievement, we would work on mediating that and trying to bring them up to their level. And then improve mental health supports for students. We know we, we talked a lot about that this year, we're, we're going to join that. We're going to work in co, in cooperation with St. Clair's on this. And then also the last thing that has been pretty big in our, in our discussions and also part of our strategic plan, obviously. We, we did, we did have a plan and implement a plan to, to deal with the substandard space. And I think we have to start being proactive about that, so we're not five years from now dealing with substandard space again. So the planning for growth, I think, was the last one, obviously, that, that applies to our facilities. And that has to do with, obviously, it's a thing that has a lot to do with moving parts with COA and whatever town development happens. And then here are your board goals for this year. It was regular board recognition of, uh, regular board recognition of staff accomplishments. I think tonight what we did was part of it, you know, bringing people in, we bring in, we have the mock trial come in. We had all different groups come in here and present each year, um, not, not, um, every meeting, but several meetings a year. We did that award system this year where we have our, um, three, basically town-wide awards that were sponsored by local groups. They distribute committee meetings to all board members within one week of the committee meeting. Um, I can let you guys decide whether or not you're up to, to go on that one. And then, um, to plan and conduct a board retreat. That is something you guys also will have to hash out and decide what we want to do with that going forward. And then I left this up, I think I'm going to have Charlene start off from here about discussion, um, and board events, uh, suggestions going forward. And, uh, she's going to go over your self-evaluation, some of the best. Charlene Peterson from the New Jersey School Board Association.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and for all of you that filled out the board self-evaluation. And I feel like it kind of goes with positive energy that I feel like I had experience here tonight, you know, hearing the ways that your district is progressing and doing things well. I think that same thing was reflected in your board self-evaluation. Uh, so if you want to take one of the top one and then the rest on the bottom.
Sure. Please be copy of that cheerful.
Okay, well, while we're kind of passing about, I'll just talk a little bit, I guess, about the process. You know, and the fact that board self-evaluation, um, is something that used to be required like four or five years ago as part of Q C A. And when the state updated its requirements back, then it took that away as a requirement. Um, so what we're finding is that a lot of boards stopped doing it. And we said, you know what, that's really not, you know, a good governance practice. If you think about the fact that you hold the rest of the district accountable, that as a group, you should be considering, how are you going to hold yourselves accountable? How are you going to take a step back and reflect at the work you're doing? Um, and one of the things that we, you know, are seeing is as they look at those characteristics of high-performing boards, one of those characteristics are those boards that do award self-evaluation, because what we learn from this can help us, um, you know, move forward. And one of the things I think that, you know, has come out of your board self-evaluation and, you know, as you sit up here and sit up here after every meeting, I don't know if you really, you know, see the progress that you're making and the work that you're doing and the impact that it's having. And so when you do take this step back and look at your board self-evaluation, for me, it was really a way to see the growth that you're accomplishing as a board. Uh, so I just kind of wanted to take you through this, go through the highlights a little bit. Um, so six of the seven of you filled it out. Um, and we look at it, it's on a four-point O scale, so look at the board scores. Um, so the board's average score in the nine categories that were evaluated was a three point three. Um, and you kind of live within a narrow range. The lowest score that the board gave itself was a three point one in planning. And the highest score that the board gave itself was a three point five in board performance. So if I said you were fine, you know, operating in this narrow range, but, you know, it really kind of is a testament to the, the, the strength of the work that you're doing. Um, so just wanted, again, as we look at this first page here, uh, this first page asks you, what do you value? What's important to you as a board? So what we look at from a New Jersey school board's perspective is how would you bring student achievement? Recognizing that we want to make sure as a board that you, you know, are mindful of the fact that that should be among the most important work that you do. Um, so as you look and see here from your board's perspective, that is the highest score that you gained anything. So know then that as a board, you are aware of, you know, that priority and it was clearly evidenced here tonight, so. So as we move forward then, we flip to page two. Um, it said, this is the area in planning that the board gave itself the lowest score, three point one, which is not necessarily low. Um, and as I look through it, you know, and look at the comments and look at the work that you do, I have to say that I was surprised from a board perspective that you would consider that to be your lowest score, because I think between the strategic plan, the setting of goals, the, you know, I can find information on your website about the goals better than I can just about anywhere else. So I feel like as a board, you really are focused on it and providing updates and providing progress. And so, you know, and I think for some of you, e- even as you look at the comments, you know, I felt that that's an area of strength. So, um, you know, I'm not sure if there's any disconnect there or not. I don't know if any of you have any thoughts about anything that you think could be doing differently or better in that area? Not really, right?
Well, I think there's, I think it's important for us to distinguish district and board goals from merit goals. I think that, you know, and, and we had shared some emails back and forth, just, you know, that tonight we're talking about district and board goals and then that'll kind of screw word into merit goals. Um, and I think, you know, it's interesting when you look and say, like, six out of six of us said, reviews, action plans developed to support the goals. I can tell you that we do get a lot of, we get not only the action plans, but updates from administration on the Derby stand on a lot of these. Um, whether, I, I think the opportunity for us is to do a little better job reviewing than making sure we're keeping up to date with them. I think when you look at how many goals we have, if you, if you add up district goals, board goals, merit goals to the superintendent, merit goals to the assistant superintendent, it's like so many goals that I can't even remember what all the goals are. I mean, that's the reality, I think that there's just too much sometimes. So I think even when I look at the, I, I think we did, when I look back at those district goals, I think we did really well as a district on meeting our goals. Um, I think we probably need to keep more, uh, process that, uh, we started with the, the, uh, strategic planning. But now as you have your strategic planning goals, those feed into your district goals, feed into your merit goals, and they kind of feed down there.
Yes.
If they're more in line, it's a little easier to keep track.
Well, I think, I think the challenge is for us to stay connected with them, you know, and engage with them just in terms of, you know, keeping them fresh and on, I think that's a part of it.
I love that they get so wrapped up in, you know, we have to approve every single check. You have to, yeah, I mean, when you look through the agenda, there's like so many details and everything we have to go through, every, you know, fire drill and.
Bus evacuation drill.
Letting loose the forest tree. Yeah, yeah, you're so detailed to make sure, I gotta approve that, but you're not on the agenda, you don't have a light on that says, I approved the update on the goals. So you almost say like, oh yeah, that's something I gotta look at, but it's not always a focus of ours and it shouldn't. So it's something I think we could probably do a better job and it seems like we all kind of fell in the same vein, in the same realm of we do good with it, but we can do bad.
Okay, then the next section we looked at was policy. Um, and here again, as I looked at it, you know, I think the board kind of, you know, we look at it from a couple of different viewpoints of how a manager's policies should have, then also do you understand your role as a policymaking body? And, you know, avoid the, um, day-to-day operations and leave the policy implementation to the staff. And if you look at the way the board filled that out, you can see that, you know, all six of you thought the board was either commendable or good in doing that. So it's clear that you understand your roles. Um, and, you know, as I look, you know, as you're looking at your agenda tonight and all the policies on your agenda, and I was looking at the comments that some of you said that it's really challenging sometimes to keep up with all the policies and understand all the policies. And as I looked at your agenda, I think, no wonder, you know, there's a lot of them on there, a lot of them really to be familiar with. So, you know, we just ask that, you know, kind of, as you come across situations that you're not sure about, to consider your policy as a resource and use that for the first place, that you should go look and say, well, you know, let me look and see what our policy says about this. Um, and, you know, so then that's a way that you help learn about it. Um, some boards have even started taking a policy and reviewing it and discussing it each one of their meetings, like once a month. Just bringing a policy to the forefront of something that's worthy of discussion. I mean, and there are some policies that are required to be reviewed annually with committee, or with community input. Um, so selecting those then as the ones that the board is discussing, but just a way then for it to keep it in front of you and, you know, as a way to make it clear to everyone that policy is your roles.
Did we end up with, uh, on about you, the board member, wanting section A? All the rest of the things on this page have six responses, just that one headline has five. Did something get skipped or is there a misprint or?
Where are you sitting on?
A, there's a two and a three that I had.
I see a four.
Wait, where are, you are policy? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm still on planning.
Okay.
Sorry, uh, I, I, this caught my eye.
Yeah, I don't know, yes.
No, we won't let you, right? I mean, I.
I thought you had to answer something.
Yeah, I'm, I have no idea about that.
Right, two, three, six. Wait, you're looking at, you're looking at A.
I'm under planning, sorry.
That's confusing everybody.
I apologize.
Maybe that's the person that wasn't at the meeting, but we did the district.
Okay, so we'll move on to student achievement then. So here again, as I looked at it just from the board perspective, you know, I think we're consistent in saying that it's something that we value, so we look to make sure that the board can do, that this is also an area where you put your emphasis and focus. And I think you can see as you look through it, I mean, everything on the top, with the exception of the very last one, almost everything was either good or commendable by all of the board members in that area. So again, and as you look at the comments, for the most part, you know, somebody says it's an area of strength, they're forgetting a lot of assessment results, that... I think somebody mentioned something, the second comment said something about analysis on the grading system, grades three, four, and five, so I wasn't sure what was meant by that. But I think for the most part, it was a positive feedback.
It certainly could be. That's, we do standardized grading instead of like traditional letter grades in three, four, and five. So it's something, we've got many board members since we implemented that procedure. We could go back and revisit why we changed to that system. So I think that's a good comment and we certainly visit that.
Yeah, that was my comment. And I've had some feedback from parents over the years, particularly in the first marking period where, again, I think the grading books and all that, but the kids scoring extremely high and they're getting meets performance, you know, getting meets with, if you want an American system, you can have an actor maybe ninety-five or ninety-two, ninety-eight, so. And they're wondering why they're exceeding expectations, you know? Firstly, I mean, I understand it, but to me, you know, as meets, they are all in, I have a must be exceeding, it's just, you know, kind of nebulous from my perspective. But I have heard quite a number of parents about that grading system. And maybe it's good for the really younger kids, but I think maybe at first, second grade, you know, the American system, we're going back to A, B, and C's plus, it'd be more understandable for some of the parents.
Okay, great. Thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else have anything to add about student achievement?
Five is interesting to me because we have, it's one of the, I always look at the ones that are interesting when you see a split, where you get three that are commendable, two that are adequate. So it's interesting to me because I think we do, as a board, a really good job of looking at data. We spend a lot of time, Dr. Keller presents them all the times a year, on different testing, you know, that we've seen and different, different tape for initiatives. So it's interesting because I didn't think about the grading system that we're using. And I will tell you, and I agree with Don, that I hear a lot of parents say to me, you know, and I think it's just a change from when they went to school, right? They were used to A, B, C and the normal grading system. When I sat down with Dr. Keller and she was explaining to me, it's really, it should be beneficial to the parents because it should give them a lot more details. It's not just math, it's different skills within that, you know, section. So, but I will tell you that, and especially when I hear feedback with people, that's one of the, especially when those first board cards come out, and it's, it's, it's something that we probably have as an opportunity to maybe explain a little better as to why we do it and how they can interpret those a little bit better.
Okay. Okay, the next section then is finance. So here, you know, as a board, we want to make sure that you understand, you know, your responsibility of providing that balance. And we talked about the fact that we have limited finances, we have so many things competing for the money that we do have. So how do we make sure that we're putting it in the places that best meets the needs of the Denver community? And that balance looks different for every school district. So how are you as a board making sure that you're providing your community students with the best education that the community can afford and what needs to happen, right? So I think as we look at how the board filled it out here and most of the comments that we look at, it feels like, you know, that the board is somewhat comfortable in its understanding of that role and its responsibility to do that. I don't know if anyone has anything that want to add about the finance part of it? The only thing I wanted to mention is somebody, if you look at the very last comment, somebody said the one area for opportunity would be how one budget requests are handled. So I don't know if that's something from a process standpoint that needs to be looked at or it's just one person's opinion, I'm not sure. You know, I feel like we've almost reached a point now where like most of this is so good that we're almost like struggling to find things in here to point out here. But, you know, I feel like that that's the way we need to improve is if we've got the big things not looked at, now let's, you know.
I mean, I, I probably look to the finance committee as to how they feel. I mean, they're the ones obviously that have a little bit closer conversation on specific lines, so I don't know how you guys feel on unbudgeted expenditures.
I think that in general, it's part of the lack, I think I have a specific one, but sometimes, you know, you have emergencies that need to be funded and if you look at the plans, your reports to come out, it's like, it's like, then you're switching money from one budget to another periodically to, if you need funds for a certain area, maybe the, you know, budget's a little bit long with the predictions, forecasting, or maybe, you know, something to name up that you just complete surprise, especially with the one, I mean, you know, sometimes you have some expenses there that are, or you have land for. So, you know, I think some of the major ones that we discussed, I think we had some of the major expenses that were maybe in the budget or not funded or that all related to them, with some of the things most recently that we've, like the transformers out there, we run forward to the, you know, battle, you, there's a little extra work done beyond the scenes, and we got a much fair price on it. So it doesn't hurt, but, you know, board meets twice a month, so some of those things I'll get into board meeting. I think it would depend on the amount. But I think of all the, the large amounts that have been unbudgeted and have been kind of discussed.
I would, Don, most of this is a complicated, complicated expenses. It's not just about the money that's needed. And we should take it close to lots of costs. We should be giving up general market where we would pay close attention to the cost and expenses to markets. And normally we could put stuff on the spending amount by time because there's a lot of expenses sometime that I've not expected and we need to save some funds for in these situations. Granted, we also use capital reserve for big projects that I've created or for that I'm not involved with. But we, but we are very diligent, paying close attention to those line items that are, you know, going from below the appropriation level, which sometimes is very unpredictable to budget exactly what you need because that's always an expense. We are diligent, trying to weight expenses and trying to save as much as we can and save for later expenses.
Yeah, I think it's, in my opinion, it's always that balance of ensuring the district is appropriately run, running the district, and then having a question on the evaluation that says requires all requests for unbudgeted expenditures. So does that mean that I need a box of pencils and that's an unbudgeted expenditure? It's outside of, you know, it's extra pencils than you expected to buy? I mean, like, I, I expect our business administration, which I know they do, to handle things like that. I mean, and I know Don made a good point that all large ones, you know, expenditure we always talk about. I just don't know if we have a definition of where that line is. And I think we've talked, I, I've probably talked about it from post, year after year of like, what goes on, what goes on the agenda to be like, hey, we're going to approve this? As opposed to it just goes on the checklist? And I just, I'm still not clear if we have a defined line or it's like, well, we kind of, you know, we decide as to what we think is appropriate to put there. I don't think it's fair to put you guys in that place to let you make the decision as opposed to the board telling you, hey, we expect this. That's, I guess, my point. And I was the one who wrote that comment. I, I probably said it every single year at the board. Like I said, if this said, you know, requires, you know, large requests for unbudgeted expenditures, it'd be a different answer for you, wouldn't you say all requests? To me, that, you know, we look at twenty-page bills list every month, I don't know. I don't know where that line is.
But I mean, in my opinion, because of the process, we've come a long way, right? We have the, we have the monthly mark two, yeah, we do that now, something we implemented last year to address this concern. So I feel just as a philosophy and a process and a business owners, I think we have a much better feel when a budget that comes coming, like everything is valid, you know, what are the validations? So again, my personal opinion, we've made a lot of progress. Is there room for improvement? Probably, but I think it's a sea change for the board.
And, and, and don't get me wrong, I mean, I made the comment, I think that the district operates in a very fiscally responsible manner. I have no doubt as to that we're doing everything appropriate, it just, I, and I don't know, I mean, if I'm the only one, I'm one of seven, that's totally fine, but I think, I think we can go a little more direction to the administration as to what we're looking for so that they're not surprised that we, you know, certain board members are asking questions, that's all.
Good. So the next section then that we looked at was board operations. So this is the work that you do as a board and how effective your governance structure is, which in your case would be the committee structure, and how well that works for you as a board. So if you look at the way the board evaluated it, you can see that for the most part, the board does feel that this method of governance allows it to do the work it has to do, that you're getting the information that you need. And so as we look at the comments, I think, you know, the only thing that someone said, you know, is the board that you do have a good decision-making process, that's a way to do a better job of defining our expectations to the board president and administration in advance of the public being. So I'm not sure if there was, that referred to questions that you, you know, that you have or clarification of things or, you know, what, what was intended there? Because it seems like they said for the most part that the board feels that, you know, you are, the grading system is working well through this. Does everyone agree that you feel like you, you know, you have a good process in place for your committees and that the, the structure works? Seems like that way.
The, the one area I wanted to kind of throw it out to the board was number seven, which is provides, only because it's one of the lower ones that we rated ourselves, provides time funding and opportunity for orienting and updating our members on local county, state level levels in accordance with statutory travel regulations. Anybody?
I had to read it several times. And I'm still about a hundred percent sure.
I, I agree. I, I read it a few times too, and I kind of was thinking the same thing, my feeling on it, and I got Shirley and asked maybe that question. I looked and said, were there training opportunities, whether at the workshops for New Jersey School Board meetings, mostly school boards up, that are meetings and opportunities for us to go to? Do we provide the time, money, what, opportunity for people to go do them? That's the way I read it. So just wondering if everybody else felt that way and if we can do, what can we do better with that, I guess, is the question.
My, my feeling is there's never been, there's never been a training thing that I, not that I could do. And I think if it comes down to a personal issue, you know, can you make the time, do you want to go? So I mean, as a board, I think we, and part of it, maybe it's about the true understanding and know if they're available, I don't know how does that affect us? Maybe the proxy question.
Or is it that people aren't happy with the offerings that are available? Is there something, you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm just wondering, we score ourselves pretty low as a board on that.
I kind of feel like for that one, that, okay, we don't really provide time or opportunity if somebody wants to go to one of the various things that comes up in the emails or whatever. We will provide whatever funding is necessary and local county, state, and federal level levels, the rest of it, I mean, we provide the funding. Opportunity and time, and time is basically up to the individual board members and opportunity is what we get. I mean, the only place I've really seen it, except for the stuff that's absolutely mandatory and which I think the mayor sends out the emails, hey, you have to do this this year. We don't, I don't think we really make the opportunities well-known aside from the emails that we get from New Jersey School Boards. I mean, I, I may be wrong about this, but it doesn't seem to me like there's, like we do enough to say, hey, this is what you can do for training, that's what you can do for training, this is available.
Would you like us to add to the cookie order? Upcoming JAB training for some reason? I know you guys get emails. We're up.
Are there other sources for this information out there besides what we get from New Jersey School Boards?
Well, when I have something for you, I send it to like, before I come to staff communication or graduation, things like that. I guess for the school boards, a training.
I mean, one of the things that we started doing last year too was putting out a year-long schedule so that in one place, it shows you every training that we had by topic for the year, so that you're just not only dependent on those, you know, those hard posts emails that come out all the time. So they make sure that you need.
Is that a website? Or is that something that you sent out in an email?
It was last year, it was, well, it's something, you know, we don't have anything out yet for the next calendar, you know, this whole calendar year.
I missed that email last year somehow, so that probably moved.
So, but again, so that might be something then to make sure that, that all the board members have that so that you have a year and a glance of what all the training opportunities are for the end years. And we're trying to do more things regionally, you know, we, August first have one on communication, communicating with the community and, you know, so trying to bring things, bigger topics up regionally here as well. Okay, we'll move to board performance. So this was my area that the board evaluated itself with a 3.5. And, you know, talk more about the way that you as a board work together and, you know, the confidentiality, the code of ethics, kind of, you know, how you maintain yourself and work as a team. So we thought it was good from a board perspective that you felt that this isn't, you know, this was your high area, that this is the area of strength because a lot of times this is a challenge for a board, you know, especially when boards have to evaluate the board as a whole. And this is one of those, this is the area where the board members always say, I do this great and the rest of the board doesn't, you know? And you guys actually looked at it differently and basically, you know, if you look how close the board score and the individuals score, they're almost the same. So for your board, you know, you looked at how important this is where you was a room and be operating this way. And then if you look at the comments, there are times where I've ever sort of here come to the meetings unprepared resulting in abstaining from particular votes. So it gets from a board perspective, you know, it's important, I realize there's things that get in the way, but really it is important to do your homework. And, you know, you're saying that, you know, somebody just asked me this question the other day about board, you know, board members and when they come here in conversation and, you know, what's the difference about, like, what board should be discussing at the board table? And I said, you know, you shouldn't be coming here to get your education about what's on the agenda and asking questions. You should make sure that you have that before you come to the board table so that what you discuss at the board table is not asking, what did I miss or, you know, what should I know because I didn't read my pamphlet or didn't do my homework? But come to the board meeting well-prepared to have informed discussions about the information that you did receive so that you as a board can, you know, make sure that you are voting in the best interest of the students and that you all have been able to contribute to the discussion.
I know.
I know, one of the things we did this year was to try to push up the agenda, getting pushed out earlier. Has that been, in general, has that helped people? Are you taking advantage of that?
Yeah, maybe it's been, yeah, it still ends up being something.
You know, by, Doug, you're not, it's a great thing. This was a week where I was on vacation, there is, they didn't send it out, but it's there. So you guys should look at it, and they're actually already in there. So you can start looking at it, and you can watch it.
That's awful, I think that's a, that's a big deal, I think that's where the problem is. Even if it's, even if it's being part and parcel, it's okay.
So then the next section was board and superintendent relationships. And here, again, you can see just based on the way the board evaluated itself in the comments, that, you know, that kind of the components are in place for a board and superintendent to have a good working relationship, that, you know, communication is important, trust is important, respect is important, making sure that both, you know, that the board understands its role and how its role is different from the role of the superintendent, the chain of command. So those are all things that are, you know, important components to a good board and superintendent relationship. And if you look, it appears that those things all are in place here for your district. Then the next section, hasn't anyone had any comments about it, was board and staff relationships. And here, it's a little more challenging, even if you said, really, we do honor the chain of command, then the board's communications with the superintendent, so how does the board have a relationship with the staff? So, you know, one of the ways was the way you did it tonight, of, you know, having recognition of the staff, having the staff, you know, have professional development opportunities, having good personnel policies. So those are all ways that you as a board, you know, can have a relationship with your staff and still obey the chain of command. So I think there was mention about, I mean, this, I think, you talked about it tonight too, the special award thing that you guys started this year, and people liked it, hoped it would continue. And you just kind of said that, you know, that as much as it's going well, that it is an important area that the board would like to see staff recognition. And then the next section was, the last section is board and community. So here is probably an area where it's usually a challenge for boards, because it seems like no matter what you do to try to reach out to your community, you always reflect and say, you know, are we reaching the community the best way that we can? What can we do differently? How, you know, how can we get the message out? And this is an area, if you look at number seven on the top, this is one of the few areas, again, where, you know, three, so six of you filled it out, three of you thought you were only doing an adequate job in having an effective community relations program. So it's a look at an area where the board is suggesting that there might be an opportunity or something that, you know, we might want to put some focus or attention on, that kind, you know, just based on the score that the board gave, we jumped out a little bit. So, and I think, you know, there's a mention that things are going well, based on the fact that you were here. Somebody mentioned, look at the, you know, affordable housing, the need for additional conversation that has had. And then somebody had also said that they would consider that an area that needs to continue to improve. So, again, as we look at goals, as we look at board goals, you know, this might, you know, we should use the information from this to take into consideration when you set your goals. If anyone has anything that they feel like, you know, they were hoping to see, or, you know, anything else missing from the board and community?
Yeah, when I, you know, went through this board and community, it's come up on the radar screen before, and, you know, I think we do, we don't have a formal community relations committee, and maybe the structure's not there, but I think, you know, I think it's always been good. I think since Steve's been here, it's gotten even better with the, the interaction with the people throughout the community, the seniors, the town council, sports groups. When we talk about regionally, I feel we had all the sports god balls come in for a meeting and explaining what needed to be done, and all of that, and like, like we're adding, the community uses school facilities. I think, you know, we do a tremendous job, we have the Pacifics groups, scouts using the art buildings, we have the sports organizations using our buildings. I know it was bad in the spring, I was able to get a gym on the lake, you know, some more teams to practice, because the hills were closed, and there was a lot still going on, so, you know, it'd be good to find out where the efficiencies are, so we could address them. Obviously, we don't have that community relations committee per se, but I think if you're trying to use the facilities, engage in the community, you've got to do a great job. And many of the people here are also on, involved with other sort of organizations, sports groups, interacting with people in the community, sites like the board of this. I, you know, my perspective, you know, people here, and I'm, I'm leading the administration, engaging the community.
Yeah, I would agree, I think that, I think it's an area you could always improve. I think, you know, it's one of those things where, as you get that relationship, you always got to look for something new and different to do. So I think that's where I look at it and say, I think we're doing good, and can we do better? I think when you look at other school districts locally, I think that we do, I think we do the best job of anybody compared to other local districts that I see, particularly other ones that may be involved in Denver here. I think we could always look for ways to improve and come up with new ways. I think as far as, those are the two, I circled two, Don, promotes community use of school facilities. I think maybe an opportunity there is to get, you know, to get, to get a community use of a school facility, you have to fill out a carbon copy form, like, literally not like carbon copy, like email, like a carbon copy form. I mean, like, maybe we can get a little more sophisticated with how we schedule. I know we had issues where people are, like, scheduled for it, and then it's like, well, you know, there's stuff in the way. It seems like that process maybe can get a little better. You know, I mean, you have to physically drop off a form at the school, and you have to drop it off between eight and four. Well, we've got people that maybe are working and can't get to the school at that time. So is there a way for us to get a little better there? I think that's, those are the kind of things that we do a really good job of, and we certainly, our buildings are full of Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, you know, sports, you know, sports organizations. So I think that, you know, we do a really good job of it, can we make it a little better? Well, I think this is an area where we do well, and we always need to look at the next thing. I think one of the reasons why I think we maybe scored lower this year than other years is that we had, like, strategic planning and everything, that felt like we had a lot more community involvement in the past years. Initially, we didn't have a big initiative or something, I think, that was as involved with the community as we have other years. So that's my take, probably. I mean, we had, like, Twitter, you know, we did, like, the social media stuff at one point. So we did a lot of other things, maybe it's just an opportunity to look and say, what else, what's the next thing we can do to get the call of community a little more?
So then last...
Sorry, I was one of the ones who put adequate for the community relations program. The reason I did that is because I don't really think we have, like, a formal program. We have a couple of people who put a lot of effort into it, like Steve and you, Mike. I mean, I think you've been to every one of the town council meetings, where lately you're pushing the, you, I think you two did, right? For the color and the stuff. But we don't have, like, a formal, we don't like have a formal program. I mean, we have a few people who do a lot for it, but we don't have, like, a recognized board program.
Yeah, I haven't read that question just yet. I feel like ad hoc, we're all going to do this amount, but it's not because of the mix of people on board currently. If that changes, this would, you know, wouldn't necessarily continue that.
I didn't particularly think that at all.
Okay.
I didn't.
That made more sense to me. I think we do a great job.
We did, we did, it's not a program, maybe it's not a...
You're right, it's not a policy, you know, or...
Do we need a community program? I don't know.
I think you're right, we decided we didn't have people sitting up there.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, certainly, I think something we could look at, maybe get to a goal setting, that maybe has...
I think we also have to keep in mind that a lot of our liaison positions act as, as our community relations. I mean, we have foundation liaison, we have all the data liaison, council liaison. So we might not have that set committee or program, but we're working with many, many organizations within the town, so that's another way to look at it.
And the fact that the community, I think in general, and I don't want to say everybody, but certainly in general, we have gotten the word out in every way I think we can, or at least, surely there's other ways you can, but in significant ways we've gotten the word out, that we're, you know, close to full capacity in our schools. If there's more students that come in, you know, it's important to get the word out there ahead of time, because what we don't want is to all of a sudden come to the eleventh hour and say, "Oh my gosh, you have to do something," and, "Why didn't you guys tell me for years" that this was potentially coming out of the road? So I think that's part of, to me, a community relations program, where we're getting the word out. The fact that we've got, you know, more advertising in newspapers and articles in newspapers than we've ever had, because our, I think, part of that is Steve's proactive approach to getting the word out there. You know, we've gotten a lot more attraction from reporters that come and give stories on our schools, obviously, social media. I think we've done a lot in the past, and I think we just need to look for that next level, that next step, to say, "What do we do now?" Like, what's the next thing? I mean, you look at, like, the police department, they do, like, coffee with the cop and stuff like that. Those are all just, like, little marketing ideas, to get the word out there about what they're doing in the community. I think the same thing on the school side, we look at, what's the next kind of program or something called it? And I, I agree with Lauren, I didn't look at, like, do we have a program? I looked at, like, we've got all these little things you can do, adds up to a program, I guess. I didn't look at it as formal as that word.
So let me ask you guys a question, like, you're telling me, Sandy, do you think, are you answering the questions for the district? Because I think some of the things you're saying are reflective of the district, and some of the things, like, I look at it as just the seven of us, you know, separate from the administration, from the timing. So, and that's the difference.
Like, when you talk about what Steve does, to my mind, that doesn't really count.
That doesn't apply, that's why I made it very...
I tried to do it as narrow as possible.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the top part is about the board as a whole, not Steve, not Sandy, not Damaris. And the second part is me personally, not anybody else.
The only thing I can say about that is, and it's a good point, and I definitely try to look at it that way, but I think also, if you empower the administration to do it, and then Steve takes that and goes and does it, it's kind of like, you know, Steve empowers his employees, you know, whether it be Damaris or Sandy, to go take the lead on, you know, business workings or educational. And I would still say it's Steve that's leading the group, we as a board are leading Steve and the administration down the road, and, oh, this is where we as a board want to go. I mean, I don't think we have to do the community relations things directly as much as let Steve know in a goal-setting form that this is a goal of the district, so develop action plans that would meet our goals as a board, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think there's a great, at that point.
I think, I know, we've been conversating.
Okay, let's go on to the last section then, where you were asked to identify challenges facing the district, that are recognized in the board size, priorities, first student achievement, what are the three major challenges? So we looked at, you know, from the responses, what are the most common responses that the board members gave? And the impact of affordable housing was something that was on a lot of the responses, looking from a financial standpoint, either calling a budget, staging, unfunded mandates. And then also looking at what the impact of limited resources might be having on the staff. Are we able to attract and retain the staff that we would like to, you know, based on the funding? And then the last part of this was asked what kind of training you might like as a board, and it was all over the place, right, of different ideas and thoughts that you had. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about the board self-evaluation itself? Okay, well, Dan, thank you for taking the time to come out. And, you know, I think that sometimes it allows you to have conversations, you know, like, let's say, you spend so much of your time doing district work, that you sometimes don't find the time to focus on the things that the board needs to talk about. And so sometimes the board self-evaluation is something that helps you do that. So the last piece of this are the three graphs then, so I just quickly wanted to go over what they mean. So the first one is just, at first page, what we said we value, and then looking at how we scored ourselves as a board, and kind of comparing them two. And, you know, ideally, where what we said is important to us, then where our focus and intention should be placed. The second chart looks at the top, the board score, versus the bottom, individual score. And again, ideally, the board score would be higher than the individual score, like, what we accomplish together as a team, you know, that synergy should be higher than what we do as an individual. And then the third one compares last year's scores to this year's scores. So you can see in pretty much every area that the board increased from last year. So good job. So then the last part of what we were going to do tonight then was to set both district goals and board goals. So again, to just kind of help differentiate. So the district goals are those goals that are in the superintendent's evaluation. So we're picking, like, you know, three, four, or five things that we think are so important that needs to be the focus for the year, that we are going to have them, you know, put in the superintendent's evaluation, to have the accountability for them. And knowing that we have a strategic plan, which is, you know, kind of that five-year thing, how do we, you know, keep the strategic plan alive? How do we make sure that it's being carried out? And the district goals are the way that we do that. The things that we're focusing on should be then things that the strategic plan has suggested the direction for us, and now we are looking at actions to help carry that out. And then also, there may be new things that have come up since when we did the strategic plan that we weren't even thinking about, that now perhaps needs to be a focus for us. So as we look at it, I think it was important, I guess, to, I have kind of a summary, I guess, of some of the things that we're up to already of what your strategic plan is. I have that on one side, and then on the other side, the last year's district and board goals. So I don't know if we could have the slide back up of what the suggestions were for the board, or for the district goals for this year, so that we can then look at that.
Can you put that back up?
The slide of our, our board goals suggested.
That's going to take me a minute.
And then I think that that would be a good starting point, so that we have the strategic plan, we have last year's goals, and then we can just focus on the slide with the suggestions. And then use that as a starting point for our conversation. Again, knowing then that if there's anything else that we want added to it, but at least that's where we'll start. So we kind of save the district goals, because as a board, you know, we're involved in helping setting the what, what is it that we would like to see the district accomplish for the year, and then go work with the administration, and that the superintendent and his team develops the action plans, that the staff are kind of the ones that carry it out, and report back to the board. So in some way or another, it's involving everyone in the district. And we would hope that these goals that we set here continually, we call it kind of a stair-step approach, of, okay, we're setting district goals, then when the principals set building goals, there should be some connection to these, you know, these goals, and then what you see going on in the classroom, so that we're all kind of working off of the same foundation. So... And then when we look, I don't know, well, if we're waiting for this, we might do board goals first, to kind of make the most efficient use of our time. So board goals then are goals that you as a board control the outcome of, and all of the tasks that are needed to carry out the goal are all tasks that are within the board's purview, within the board's responsibilities. within the board's responsibilities. So we typically start by looking at last year's goals and saying, okay, is there anything there that we want to carry over again, that we, you know, just need to adapt or modify slightly? So last year, you had regular board recognition of staff accomplishments. Is that something you feel like you've accomplished already, or something that you want to continue as a goal or a priority?
That seems to be the kind of thing where we should do it, but it shouldn't necessarily need to be a goal. I mean, we've, I like to think that we're sort of in the habit of finding something that's worth recognizing every, every regular meeting, maybe not every business, and maybe not every work session, but every regular meeting, I kind of feel like we do that.
I'm really free to, I think, something that would be nice to me, but it doesn't necessarily need to be a goal.
Okay, how about the next one about distributing the committee meeting minutes? Tell the board numbers within the week of committee meetings?
Who can't track them? A lot of it.
We did better towards the end of the year.
I got a feeling we did better once we decided to change it from a week to forty-eight hours.
I think we'll, there's probably a few reports that could be that timeframe, but they don't work. But maybe we're talking about, must get it.
Okay, so again, it sounds like that might be a practice then, that you now have a place that doesn't necessarily have to be a goal anymore.
Right.
And then the last one was the planning, conducted board retreat. That happened, or not?
It's a yes retreat. We talked about it a couple of times.
Not going to be the long line, the long line can't win here.
We talked about it a couple of times.
Talking about splitting, taking two presidencies. Might have seemed different then.
Another Mariana's Law, rather than the board, not the long line.
I don't think you worked, you don't think you worked on that.
I was thinking of the goal again, right?
I was in favor of that.
We try to, district, it's finding something that we know we need to work on, instead of finding something outside of, you know, one of the big things you're working on is planning for growth, which could also be a district goal, but maybe there's something within that you can just make it. I mean, you're already really focused on, you're really focused on going to the town meetings and getting the word out. Why create something else when this is something you need to work on and that you want to work on? It's like, something that we need.
Like, if we don't find out a core, an innovation?
No, I just mean for planning for growth, not for professional growth, I mean, like, I mean, for growth of the town. We know that's something that it's, you guys are all really focused on working, so why not make that one of your goals? Instead of, because that's something you're going to be doing, instead of finding a third goal. It's not related.
The other thing we might consider is pushing forward fair school funding. I mean, if working, we've been concentrating on it last four, six months.
The fair school funding?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact terminology.
What's that? Fair funding action.
So we've planned.
Everybody I've heard doesn't think those are two very important things. I also don't think anybody here that doesn't think we're going to do those things.
Well, that's kind of, I think we could do a lot of that. That's kind of, I think you're, I think I actually, you're not the same feeling. It feels like a cheat in a way, right?
Yeah, you guys think, the goals, when we write the goals for the district, we feel like it's an area of opportunity, it's an area where we can, we should have growth. We see we're deficient, so to speak, and we want to improve on it. I feel like this is an area where we have been diligent on and will continue to focus a lot of attention. So, yeah, it's a good place.
We'll get it better, we'll get it better, right, and fair funding. We kind of got into the beginning, we didn't really get our word out as much as we could have.
It expands on the things that you know you're already interested in, and always trying to find an additional job. I'm completely impressed at how much volunteering you guys do. I don't know any other schools, I know a lot of educators of districts, and I can't believe how much the board here goes to things, you know, is out in the forefront, running things, promoting things in the town as well as the district. You don't need another job to, like, come up with another thing that you need to do. Expand on the picture.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a fair point, you know, maybe with the fair funding, maybe we go deeper, right? We reach out, we all reach out, we, whatever, whatever the game is.
Right, right.
We all session, we sell.
Yeah, I mean, don't be, just don't have to be totally.
So, we all do one, and keep moving on.
Can we, so we talked a lot about community outreach. Do we make that, I mean, that's part of community outreach, is talking about these things that we're already, you know, that's almost part of a community outreach program. I mean, the growth is important to the community, and the fair funding is obviously a tribute for the community. Can we incorporate that into a goal?
I think it means the community outreach is smarter, smarter about, right, because we're focusing.
Almost in the action plan.
Right, yeah. We're saying, okay, the outreach, maybe we can maybe use two of them.
I think part of the mindset is, because of our Bible and our, the book, and our communication within the community, how we go about doing that is out putting an extra burden on the role of the president as the voice of the board. So, that's just, I don't disagree with it as a good plan, I just think that it has to.
Just kind of like, don't get it to you now.
That is part of our Bible.
Yeah.
The board as a whole can, person to.
Design me here.
So we designate, I mean, we do it all the time, right? If you're a liaison for a certain committee or whatever, you go in and talk to that committee about, or that organization about what's going on on the board. I, I think what you're saying, Laurie, is we usually don't come in and say, the opinion of the board is this. But I think that we probably, on certain things, certainly could, because, for instance, we join, we all, well, we, the majority of the board voted to be part of the fair funding action committee. So therefore, the foundation of that organization, we as a board have agreed that that's something that is important to us in the board meeting, the word out. I think, does that cover us, or me?
I don't know, I just worry, for instance, on social media, we, we're, many of us are in dental residence. We're both in the need of parents. I never comment on something I let you answer, because I know number one, you're governor, but also you're the president. So if there's a very specific question where I can just post a link to a policy, then I'll answer that. But I feel like it's not my role to answer it. So, that, I'm just talking more about the specifics, do you know what I mean?
But I think the other way to make that statement certainly is, we all have a right to our own personal, one out of seven, opinion about something, right?
Sure, but then we're not, then that's not even our goal, that's not. So how do boards do this, and how do they navigate the bylaws that their board is communicating with the community without, I don't know, maybe the president doing this thing?
Well, I mean, some of it is more just, you know, kind of what we talked about before, of just putting a plan in place, or advocating for a plan, or advocating for a structure, and, you know, kind of being proactive about your message. So doing those types of things without the board actually having to be the one to, you know, say, to respond to the emails, or do things that typically might not be a board member's role. You as a board can, you know, like we talked about, get, you know, get your message out there, develop what your message wants to be, make sure you're proactive, communicating it, identifying communication avenues, identifying who potential stakeholders are for the district to be in a relationship with, you know, how can we continue to bring the committee into the process? So kind of all ways that you as a board can assist with communication, and perhaps not actually have to be the one doing it.
I guess this is an area where the board and the administration, you have to consider both, because the administration does a huge amount of communication with the community.
So there should be a way then, that there should be opportunities where the board can assist with that. You know, if you think about the fact that you're pretty much the eyes and the ears of the community, so how can that role that you play assist the, you know, assist the administration in most effectively reaching the community in, you know, in areas and topics that are important to you? There should be something that you can bring to this, you know? And that's one of the things that when we have this August one training, that's one of the things that we're saying, that as a board, you have to play the dual role of the communication to the schools and communication to the community, and making sure that the schools understand what the board's and the district's vision is, and making sure that the community understands what the district's vision is, and how to bring all of those parties together, you know, to all make sure that we're all working together for, you know, the competition. It's, you know, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to do, because then again, it's something that was different for every district.
I think, you know, to, I think we're probably getting a little granular when we talk about specific, you know, initiatives. I think we can probably say create and implement a community relations program. Is that?
Everything good with that, or?
I mean, in the details we can talk about, because then, when you come down to what does that look like, then you start talking about, okay, we're going to talk about, you know, growth of this district, we're going to talk about, you know, fair funding for our school district. Maybe those are the two big things that we're going to focus on. And then how do we create programs about getting the word out about those specific things? And Don's that are doing a nice job talking about fair funding and giving some suggestions on how we can go about that. That one, you know, we got to kind of see how that plays out a little bit, I think. And that's where, you know, that goal allows us to kind of not get to the great, because we say fair funding, and then if, you know, Governor Murphy signs S two and A two, and then, you know, he's, you know, fully, you know, all of a sudden, if that, you know, that program's already in place, what are we going to do about it? You know, we almost like, don't have a goal there. We do that. Yeah.
The last thing I heard from business administrators is that it's going to be part of a budget, about a certain piece of legislation. It's not a final, or finalized yet, it's still a, I guess, a work, work progress. And my only concern is that if they put it through, and it's holding on, that's great, if you don't want gold, gold achieved, we won't even have that. But if it doesn't happen, that really can't get lost in the weeds. You really need a very concentrated, organized effort.
Yeah.
Like, in terms of getting a school district passed. And, you know, you know, if you end of the school year, a lot of things going on, but, you know, you told the parents about it, that, you know, how did that any impact in terms of getting it organized? It's almost like a, and even after that goes through, you have to fund the mandates, and have the playoffs, the regulations, that they cost money.
Yeah, I think that goal gives us the ability to kind of drill down and say, do we want an ad hoc committee? Do we want to, you know, let's kind of leave that as a goal, and then how we implement that it can be, you know, from here.
Yeah, it's a good goal.
So we have created, implemented a community relations program. And we put some sub-goals under the wall, like planning for growth and fair funding as things that will fall into that. Is there anything else that the board wanted to consider, or do you think that is media enough of a goal that?
It's available. Take a while to.
So you want to just leave it, would that be the board goal?
I like the retreat idea.
Majority of the board feels the retreat is important.
I'm not going to do it virtually, so.
You want to go, you want to put that back on?
You can see the way our meeting is going.
Thought of retreat more before you get me.
This is, you can watch YouTube video from last year, we can.
No, I haven't seen it last year, and I still have this vague answer. I said, am I following an equestrian with you guys, or what's going on? We're going to get a speaker key. So you want us to add it on?
I know.
Okay.
I'll go and know what.
Even me do. What should we do?
Well, for those people who are asking for it, what's the expectation, or what's the?
Can you give some examples of some retreats that you have seen in the past?
Sure, I mean, you guys. We wonder if they were circles or squares, or personalities, you know? And how square should we relate to circles? We have to first.
We have, we have different personalities. Which I don't think is a good feature to tell me that. A lot of time.
Maybe, maybe there's a causal effect, and we're doing better today because of the, you know, the use.
Well, the people who are squares and o's, not zeros, but the o's, it's a little, a little bit from that, you know?
So, yeah, so can you give us, can you give us a few examples of successful retreats?
Well, I mean, a lot of it is, you can almost consider this to be a retreat. I mean, so a lot of the, what boards do, and they'll just kind of try and do everything all at one meeting. So, like, when I go, I just did a retreat the other day in Booth, so we spent the morning and is doing a lot of the same thing. We went through their strategic plan to see where things are, what needs to be done. We went through the board's self-evaluation, we talked about, you know, but it's kind of a more informal, you guys are all sitting up here in this, you know, in a more formal setting. It's more kind of an opportunity to kind of sit around the table, have a conversation, throw ideas out there, almost basically doing this same work you're doing here, but doing it in a more informal setting. And just kind of allowing, then, you know, it just allows for a freer exchange of conversation. I mean, not that, obviously, it doesn't appear you guys have any problem exchanging conversation, but when it's in a freer, you know, a freer format, some boards will come and have, you know, presentations, like have a whole day planned of updates on different things. So it's just kind of a chance for you to come together in a less structured way and be able to talk about things, have updates about things, and do planning for the next year.
I was going to say, it sounds like if you did, so.
I mean, my, my take on it is, if we're going to, if we're going to spend a couple hours, all of us doing that, I'd rather say, let's find a way that all seven of us can get out to different activities in the community and talk about, like, what we're doing as a board. I think, you know, I'd rather say, let's spend a couple extra, an hour at each one of our meetings talking about stuff that we have to, as opposed to taking a Saturday out or something like that, and that's what we even.
Well, I think turning with the outside of things, I think that, I don't think any of us have a problem communicating our thoughts to the rest of the board, we're all pretty vocal, so.
Yeah, I don't think these meetings are overly structured. Everybody's doing, I mean, to talk at multiple times. And then we have our committees, and a lot of people serve on different committees. And those are very informal, where we sometimes will off-track a little bit, discuss some ancillary issues, not totally on committees' problems, but want to do discussions at the, at the meetings. Again, you know, we've had some retreats before, I just, you know, somebody had to explain the values, you know, what's, what are we going to accomplish coming to a retreat that's going to make things better that we're not doing now? I don't want these people serving a lot of other volunteer organizations, the time is really precious to mine. And to have a retreat, to have a retreat, doesn't make any sense to me.
I'm sending a proxy to get off the list.
It sounds like, it sounds like, I don't think this is a surprise for us. At least it's a surprise for presentations on these.
Yeah, I mean, I think everything that usually takes place on a retreat, we do.
So you actually do it all. So you actually do it to the ultimate...
You can check that one.
So next is, if you're prepared with the community's goal, with the community outreach goal as being your one and only goal, then I think we could move on to district goals if you're good with that. Okay, so for district goals then, and we should start with consideration of the suggestions that were provided here. I mean, and I can tell you that future ready is a big initiative. You know, it's something that probably just got kicked off like maybe two or three years ago. And districts have embraced it at such a level that it's far exceeded every expectation that we had. So it's kind of like the sustainable jersey thing, that it has a checklist, and it has actions that you have to fulfill, and, you know, you have to submit evidence that you've done all of these things. So it's kind of a way for your district to kind of provide a measurement or an assessment of helping you, you know, not only do kind of the hardware and the software, but it also looks at the instructional practices. So it's a way to kind of take everything that's involved in getting your students future ready and putting it into like a checklist format. So then where you as a district can kind of help see to see that you're within that framework. I mean, we're even doing it, it's one of the Jersey School Board's goals, like, okay, we are promoting this to district, we should be doing it ourselves. So we just did strategic planning, and it's one of our goals is to be future ready as well, so. I don't know, are the rest of the group in favor of that as being a goal or focus area for the district for this year?
Should we start with the number of goals we have before we start?
I think it's a goal for each, actually, it's a big, it's 13. Yeah, it's a goal for each of our four strategic planning areas. That's where we got it, Steve, I guess. But do we want to, do we want to attempt for goals, do we want to have some plus for goals?
I mean, from what I know, and I've been reading about, like you said, it is a big, it's a good retreat. We've, you know, I've done multi-year.
It's just going, yes, I don't probably believe on...
Has the district started yet or not?
I started last year doing all the training, so I've done the training, it's what I have to do to get us there.
I think that when I look at those four goals, the suggested goals, I think that all four of them are really, really important. And I think the last one, I don't want to say is the weakest, but there's a lot of unknowns. So that can go, that can either get really busy or can level off for a little while. I think it probably is going to level off for this year. Although I think it's important to have there, in case it ramps up, we need to be able to act a little bit, act quickly on it. I mean, I think some of these things, we already have a few things in place, like improved mental health support for students. I mean, that was one of the things I had written down was, you know, social emotional learning. I know we've had some things started with that. Obviously, the whole initiative with St. Clair is that, I think we need to continue to improve that, grow that. I think, but we have some things started with all of these. It's not like we're starting from scratch on any of the, maybe future ready is probably the most from scratch, although not completely from scratch.
Right, we think we're...
Everything else is kind of starting, and we already have some things coming to move in that direction. Right.
I agree, and I think the board's been together a long time, and Steve and I have worked together, and Mary's, we've walked enough that we, we're not thinking of goals on your head. I mean, we're already three years down, knowing where we have to get to next year, or we already, already... So yes, we've already somewhat started on these because we've been thinking about them last year.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if the fourth one is maybe a goal for the next year, four years.
Sure, yes.
Yeah, to bring attention to it.
Yeah. I mean, to me, one and two, I mean, I'm sorry, two and three are the highest priorities and quite the ones that are the best bang for the buck. I think those you have to do. I think future ready, you kind of obviously ties into that. I mean, it's all about student achievement, it's all about student health. And so I think those three, yeah, I would drop the fourth one off, I would still drop.
The only thing I would say is, number two, we do that every year.
We do, it would be the action plan would be different.
Exactly.
I mean, this is always going to be a goal, always our goal is to create student achievement. If we didn't, then not even our purpose. But I guess the action plan just always varies. And this is definitely going to be a year where focusing on our kids that are not beating those goals. You know, with all the work and work we've done, you know, training, we'll do sensory math, all these other things that will bring them to work. It'd be the action plans, right?
Well, in increased achievement, in terms of increase, should it be a certain benchmark that would extract our student population achieved, any student achieved?
Well, I think that's what the action plans end up being, you know, having close to that. It's going to be the plan.
So usually in the action plan, there's some kind of an indicator for success. So then as the board, how do you know whether they, you know, whether the goal was achieved?
I would want some kind of hard and fast metric on this. This is only for Sandy's personal goals.
So those are different, but they're way more specific. We always, we always had this debate every year on, is the goal too broad? Because we don't, look, we don't control, it's the, what is it, the what, it is us, and then the how. Yeah, how is really upset.
And the how is measured, it comes out of the action.
I mean, you'll have the metric, you'll see the metric, because you need to be able to, be able to assess whether the goal was achieved or not. And the way that you're able to assess that is you would look at the action plan, you would look at the indicators of success. Did, you know, did everything happen that was supposed to happen? What did we say we were going to do? How did we say we were going to know whether this was successful or not? And did we meet that or not? So rather than putting it into the goal statement itself, we're giving the administrative flexibility to come back and tell us what that success should look like. So that then that will hold them accountable to that indicator that they provided for us.
How do we measure, oh, it just said improve mental health for our students. We're not improving mental health for students. I, that's what I keep, I don't want to say that, how you measure that, I guess we provide additional support.
We could have that conversation multiple times this year.
Yeah.
I think our goal for, I agree that, you know, it's obvious that they come from a section of the strategic plan, and I don't remember who said it, but it is a good point that we are moving forward with all this, except for, well, even the first case a little bit. So I guess my fear of all for was just that it might be too cumbersome, but seeing, you know, looking at it from a, you know, I can see that all four, I think, are awesome.
Was there anything from the board's perspective of any board members that had thoughts or things about a focus that isn't up here? Or are we feel that, you know, these are probably the four areas that we should go in?
Well, on third bullet, and I guess we'll get into, we get to the objectives of the action plan here. I think we've done a very good job on the HIB, Superintendent Brigo, so we have an executive session. But we've had this gray area with the meeting kits and conflict resolution, where it's not under the definition of only, but there's a problem there. And that's probably an objective I'd like to see where we can, or eliminate completely. But have a policy and a method to deal with these meeting kits and conflict resolution. So, you know, it works out in the long term for the students, and the parents too, because the parents are a part of the problem.
Okay, so that would be something that you would see then as one of the action items under?
I had a couple of things that I think come under the second bullet point. One of them is complete or continue supporting the math coaches. We have done the literacy coach and get the, finish the curriculum changes that have been imposed recently by CUSAC, get those completed now to the district as soon as possible, but those probably fall under second bullet point.
So math coaches and the curriculum changes?
It's updating the curriculum or the process.
I'm sorry, updating it. I know we're doing both of those, but those are things that I think are worth mentioning would be the subtopics for that number two.
Anything else that any of the board members have? So are we good then with moving forward with these four goals, as the way they're listed here? And then adding some of the, and I think we just talked about the conflict resolution, and math coaches, and the updating curriculum as, you know, subtopics under each goal?
Does social emotional learning fall under improvement of health for our students?
I would say yes, I think we, well, the actions that we would be doing would include those things because most for our students wouldn't be the higher end mental health support, health support, I mean, continue with the more meetings, expanding, lots of classroom, expanding social workers, kids, friendship.
Yeah, one of the things I like that we've done across the district is it seems like we've taken initiatives, and a lot of times it's one person or one group. Teachers, staff members at a certain school that kind of run with it, whether it's race sustainability, whether it's social emotional learning. And then we see success with that, and we see how do we implement that across addition, which is a really nice, I think, way to kind of implement different programs, as opposed to shotgunning into the whole district and maybe not being as focused. We're very focused in one area, and it's been great that we've had staff members that have taken the initiative in certain areas that we've been able to expand. So, I mean, I think there's, to me, there's a whole lot in that strategic goal number three. When you talk about like local citizenship, there's a lot we can do. But I think, I do agree that mental health support is probably something that we... It's, yeah, it's very important right now, and I think that we can't, not that we can't do that, but there's a lot we can do, so I'd like to see it, to, you know, grow that.
Okay, I think that means the program, right?
How are we wording that fourth one? It was just sort of planning for growth, which is what that describes.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, it just doesn't... That's all we know.
That's the problem I have with that one, is we're kind of waiting on...
Did you gather information, say informed and planned, all planned?
Yeah, I mean, it's the wishy-washy one, it's only at least control, but because if we just...
But it's important that if something turns in the next year, then it could become really important really fast. Or if things stagnate, can be kind of, it's also the only operational goal we have. I mean, everything else is, which is good, I mean, I don't want to have four operational goals. But I think we have to have eight and operational goal. We've always had one to kind of get out of subsanitary space or rentals and all that stuff. And we, we're finally at a point where that's behind us. Now I think the next step is, is that...
Starting.
Was that...
And now it's going to start again.
Trying to, yeah.
So you mean we'll need gathering information, you said, then?
I think, yeah, I think there's, I think it's staying informed, that's...
Same, same.
Monitoring the situation.
Same, engage with the test, you know, engage.
I think those are, I think those are part of the action though.
I think when you talk about, I mean, going back to kind of our board goal, community relations, you know, our strategic plan is a part of our community relations, to get the word out about what's our strategic vision. The other thing to talk about is, you know, I think putting our goals down on a piece of paper really helps us point to, hey, these are important, these are the four things that are really important this year. And I think it's important to note that because it could, like I said, get really busy real fast. I just don't know how to word it.
What are you satisfied with with our...
If I were to come in and I was just Mike Anderson, I have nothing, I don't know anything, I'm a citizen or resident of Deadville, if I saw planning for growth, I'd be like, I have no clue what you're talking about. Out of growth of, what does that mean?
Student population. That's what it would be, planning for student population, possible student population.
Effects of redevelopment?
Development of housing, right? Yeah, it's really important, just identity, housing.
Power, identity.
Yeah, goals, planning for, why does she have...
That's true.
I think it's, we just were... We're going to jump over, so I'm not, I, to me, how do this is a goal to have?
But I think it's important to make sure that it's, if we're focusing on it, it is...
Do you want to plan your retreat?
Sure. Touche, touche.
I think the administration is fully established about what our options are, but if, let's just say in turn, I'd say, you know, by September of 2019, we're going to have 300 extra students. Do we know exactly what... Yeah. I know, but this is what I'm saying, it's just a matter of the administration educating board, but I don't know...
So that goal, this goal is not going to make that, make that happen. That's outside our, that's outside of control.
No, I'm just wondering what the...
What the impact could be, like what kind of...
What the options are, I mean, how do we, how do you go fund the planning before...
But maybe it's, maybe it's a matter of where you get into the action plan, but I'd love for us to come up with maybe a community advisory board that is looking at some of these options. I don't know.
Have creative planning advisory board, impacts.
It's really engaging. It is for possible student population.
Create, plan, plan for, investigate, and prepare, plan for potential student population growth.
I've written so many names there.
Investigate, and prepare, and plan for potential student population growth. I mean, it is current, you know, it's the kind of most wishy-washy of the goals, but...
If you want to keep it, if you want to keep it foremost, I don't know, it's less of a problem, that's fine. It just seems like a little bit, I don't make work of it.
I don't want to use words like, you know, I guess, the housing.
Well, it could also be just student growth too, we don't know. I mean, yeah, we do think that housing is going to cause a decrease, but we also have turnover. If you notice, Dr. Hugge brought up the fact that our incoming kindergarten, what was it, something like...
Fifty percent were from the oldest child in family.
But it normally is like 75%.
About 30%.
So, I think you have more kindergarten workers now than you had.
More kindergarten workers now, than the first kindergarten family. We used to have like a lot of them, we had second kids, so we're seeing some turnover among our population.
You got the older population, meaning you knew, you were younger families, right?
Yeah, and a lot of people moving into town, they're getting full staff, you know, so. You have, I'm getting a cash flow out of that, but a lot of people coming in and getting some good advice on work, on housing, and care, so, so the other cash flow, people coming in.
Okay, so we have investigated, prepared, planned for potential student population growth. Let's reword it back all the way. Okay, good thought. Okay, so I will pack this up, because, you know, you already have a good framework. I'll also put together what we talked about tonight, and Mr. Billy Tree, right?
Thanks, Charlie. All right, thank you very much, Charlie.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
All right, let's move on to F on our agenda, superintendent's comment.
Okay, so our following due graduation ceremony went very nicely, nice group, it was pretty hot. pretty hot, looking pretty great, it's, it's a nice night for everybody. We'll have to consider we're going to have another coaching session for leaders in our district on July 31st with our consultant on edits. I don't know if you noticed the new signage when you walked in the building, Ted, we're on site, right? Our special service office group went nicely, we're going to hold our, our committee meetings in there, because we got more space than we do here, I'm sure we don't have much conference room space, so you'll see the special services office, which is kind of, I think, organized. Our college acceptance, this is that time of year where I like to just give you some highlights, so here's a few of the schools that our students were accepted to, American, Arizona State, Clemson, Holy Cross, Cornell, Drexel, John Jay, Lafayette, Lehigh, Montclair, Monmouth, NJIT, NYU, NC State, Northeastern, Penn State, Rensselaer, Rowan Rutgers, St. Joseph's, Santa College of Art and Science, Seton Hall, Stevens, Syracuse, Temple, TCNJ, Alabama, Miami, Penn, and Mondo. And our students, Deadville graduate class of 2018 from our schools and bottom of our sales, did achieve, were offered $9.3 million in scholarships. That's a large amount of scholarship money that was offered to them, and there's a bigger list, I just wrapped a few that I thought were interesting, you know, some of them were new ones that they haven't done. We also have one student, it was, is going to go to the, in the Army, and I've asked for permission to speak to the person from our schools to see whether or not they were okay with them releasing information of who the student is, and if he or she is still available for the August meeting, we'll have him come here like we did last year and just acknowledge the service, as our service to our country. So I thought it was a pretty nice list of, of a kid, $9.3 million in scholarship money. That's it for me.
Thank you. For today, Dr. Collins, assistance over there.
We held, the weekend was going by out, we held the summer staff development institute, and we had about 140 people attend and a variety of offerings, and we did some stand ups that you saw on Twitter. We had 18 of our staff members trained in a full day, seven hour certification for mental health first aid, so I thought, I think we got very great feedback from the staff, and we're going to try to get that grant again, it was a grant from YBA and Robert Johnson, hoping we can get it again to provide that for more staff members. And then we had another, a standout was a session where our students came in and taught teachers how to use some of the assistive technology, so I think that learned really well, and some of their little hacks and tricks that they don't have to use in Google, I think it was great for the teachers and, and they learned a lot. This concludes the assistant superintendent's report.
Dr. Collins, any business major comments?
Yes, I would like to point out that we'd like to again, we met and see the treasures report, yes, secretary report for June, we're still working on the policy of seventeen eighteen school year, and that will be unfocused for you. Additionally, I'd like to also inform you that the district is in a good financial situation of seventeen eighteen school year, and because we have saved some money, we would like to purchase approximately 270 laptops with seventeen eighteen school money to save approximately 13,000 dollars, which would have to be financed within three quarters, which is all of it within the next three quarters. Now we've paid out approximately 40,000 dollars in here to place the interest in the financing. And then we're going to do my end of work.
Thank you. All right, it is 10:05, and I will open for a public discussion for anything remains of the district. Seeing no in rushing microphone, I will close, open public comment section, the first one to be at 10:05 PM. We'll move on to our agenda. Mr. Capello, would you mind moving through all business?
All right, if there are no objections, I would like to move items on the whole business A and B, these are education reports of student enrollment in June, HIV, two HIV reports, and minutes from our work session, executive session meetings from June 11th and June 18th.
Second, here's your report. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes, but I need to abstain on B to the regular meetings, I can decide to be introduced in eighteen.
Is it?
Mrs. Deluna?
I'm, I'm, I've been, I've always been just abstaining on both to keep it simple, I didn't have to, but.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yeah, yes, however, B one, I was absent for the June 11th work session.
Mr. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Wattner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I would need to abstain on B two, regular meeting and executive session number one, so I was going to leave for the regular meeting.
Mr. Capello, would you mind moving through question four?
If there are no objections on the first now, I would like to move items one through six as a block, and also call attention to the addendum, we have under item one, addition of CCDD, E and FF, and we have addition item number seven.
Okay, there is Jess. Any questions, Congress? Welcome, free staff members that were put in the hiring tonight, so be there. Approved and congratulate. Yeah, congratulate Dr. Costa on his retirement. Kids have had the pleasure of having Dr. Costa for two years, and we're definitely upset to hear he was retiring, but happy to have had him. Congratulations to Mrs. Di Denuico, what's her name, I can't say her name, on moving the press to guide. Any other questions, Congress? Roll call please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Wattner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Construction programs, slower please.
I would like to move, if there's no objections, items one through, uh, one through three, uh, as a block, I'd like to call your attention to item one each on the addendum, sorry, I just want to make sure I got it all, got it all in the right place. We got workshops with expenses, we have the early meeting, value of middle school reading logs, and the Danielson evaluation instrument for all teaching staff in-house for non-certified central office staff, Marshall instrument for principals, vice principals, and JSBA served for superintendent. The workshops with expenses cover a few things, there's a teacher's college, there are, there's a dyslexia conference, there's a couple other things.
Important.
Important, yeah, thank you.
Hold on, thank you, Mr. Cass. Any questions, Congress?
Just noting that on one gene, that teacher is replacing another teacher who was previously in the room, but is no longer in the district, so this teacher being approved in different ways.
I would just like to say that even though I am the chair and have to move the meeting logs, I am in favor of them, as always.
Can I ask why?
Yes, it's, I, I, it really disturbs me that a couple of these books and periodic books are being removed from the library, they're not, they're not really being replaced with new material, I mean, there's, there's some new material coming in, but there's, the amount that's coming in is less than what is going out, and I've always been in favor of having a physical book for kids to look through and do stuff with, and it disturbs me that we are removing so many of these so many times. I understand, I understand that what we are doing in the last few years has been because we have made the physical library smaller to do other things with the space which was needed, but still, still don't like it, I still don't like it, though. Roll.
Any other questions, Congress? None, roll call please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Deluna?
Yes, one, three, no, two.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Wattner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker, would you mind walking through policies?
That was probably exciting, the dance one. If there are no objections, I would like to move item number one, under policy revisions, which concludes a number of first readings and 18 policies for second reading and adoption.
Second.
Here's your call. Any questions, Congress?
Because my understanding is this is the kind of policy that we're going to be looking at for the next several months, or is it just over the summer, we're going to be doing this many, and we'll drop back to a, to a smaller number once school resumes?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking at the most August and September, and then it will go down to where you're looking at five or six.
Because if I'm not mistaken, we still have a significant backlog that needs to be.
Catch up, catch up now, we're pretty close, we're thinking August, September with the backlog now, and then just back to where you're at, quarter revisions, should, should go down a succession.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all due to, because I know it's a lot, it's, it's a lot of work, but it's just something we have to get done before CUSAC monitor, we want to be after compliance and these things. Oh, and the Charlotte's update is, they're coming out to the district actually, so Charlotte is moving on that quarter, they have enough to do all since the quarter we get set up.
That could be something that we effectively communicate with.
Marking down is the community relationship. Mental load. I like to be polished, something polished. It's my favorite.
It's a small win, it's a small win.
Although there's one highlighted, which is a good one.
That's, that's a new policy that we have, that we've recommended to us to have, and it'll help us with, it'll help guide us, it'll help us if we do have another case where someone is working on, or has a student that doesn't clear, come back to school, we have something polished and we can follow.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Wattner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna, would you mind walking through finance, please?
Sure, if there's no objection, I'd like to move under letter D, finance items one through seven as a block, seven is in yellow, can hear, along with another check added to item one, check five, four, four, one.
Hold on. Jess?
Position, title lines, speech therapy, any ideas?
The mayor's, check five, four, four, one, the modulida, can you just, I apologize, I know I saw it come across, but I didn't get a chance to.
No, I was, I was, I wanted to explain this one too, we, uh, do, do, do I know this, the bills are prepared very, very early, and the bills aren't always, um, early enough to pay, and this check is specifically for the Friday done, for the best case.
Okay.
And we have money until, it's a particular problem.
And the architect just approved the payment on Friday.
Got it.
So the architect, the architect says he meant this, this benchmark, and then it'll fit X dollars.
Okay.
Just wants like change on number seven, it should just read for grade seven and eight, not optional one. Different levels of seven and eight accelerated and, and that, but it's not optional.
Mrs. Deluna, Mr. Cass, are you guys good with that?
Yep.
Am I correct in my belief that the, the students to attend the program school list that is all budgeted, that is all budgeted plans? We were expecting the.
It's all, it's all budgeted out of district places.
Thank you.
See, for like to the point, like if you have an unplanned, might be, if you're letting you out to the whole funding.
We, we have an unplanned, I always talk about it as a, it's, it normally comes on that report that I do, every, every quarter, and at that time I will tell you.
I think this calls kind of in our conversation during our, I don't know, that's your practice, but you're not following the guidelines we've set forth, so the board needs to look at that going forward.
All, all things like that would have to be on the agenda. In other words, I can't just, I can't just prove that out of the trip place without going on the agenda.
No, but I think that's the, the area, like certainly, especially in case we'd be a large part of the, of, we're talking about that area where it's not. You highlighted, but you highlighted this, you're doing this second, because it's a time, it's a procedure, but again, if you weren't here, with a next person in your shoes, how do you talk about it?
Maybe you want to consider some type of a procedure in plan that just says, we'd like a quarterly update on special education cases, kind of what I give you, an explanation. Those are all legal, those normally come from legal.
Well, let, let's say October fifth, somebody shows up, or you, like a transfer student, wouldn't that be on the October regular?
Yeah, but where would you explain it to?
I think, I think, in character of Congress, I think you're referring more to one. I think, I think in current performance, I think you're referring more to ones that are up and coming. There's discussions with parents where. There may be a potential in the future that it turns into an out of district, not one that is definitely going to be, I mean, it's going to have to be on the, no matter what, it's on the agenda, if it's not a district placement, but. That knowledge of there's one that may turn, you know, turn into an out of district placement that maybe not is heading down the right direction or whatever the case may be. Is that?
You know, there was an example of the last summer, I explained to you guys that we had a family move in that had a couple out of district kids. We talked about that. Some of the kids went out of district and I was explaining, that was a little bit of a new agenda. So I think your question is whether or not there's a procedure in place that we're in procedure or it's just something that.
No, it's more like the budget is based on a fixed head pound range or whatever. You know, the on plan, it depends way from year to year, I would be like. I guess it would be obvious just the fact it was on the agenda, it's not this one.
True.
So no, that was a bold one.
Probably in January.
Well, whatever they decide the.
I was thinking that meant to be tuition contract because it was.
Yeah, it could be I P.
I got, I have one other question. Most of these numbers are, you know, two digit or three digit, sorry. Five or six digit numbers, which one would expect for a full year of out of district placement? We've got one year. It says winter out of school summer program, but then it says eighteen nineteen school year commencing seven two. Is that just the, that's just the summer? Just for the summer?
It's called extended school year, E S Y.
No, no, the, the first one says E S Y, that's the first one was, but the first one on top of page eight just says the summer program.
Okay, so that's, it's the same idea.
Okay, so it shouldn't say eighteen nineteen school year, it should say eighteen nineteen summer, it should say like summer eighteen or something.
Well, not this school year, believe it or not, starts with July first.
That's just a term because it's a statute budget.
Alright, thank you.
The ninety nine.
So are we gonna have to, on, on those two students who are approving the extended school year, are we then gonna have to go back and approve their regular school year?
Again, all we work that way. Some kids are, are in district, are appropriate, but then they go out of district versus. Some kids advise versus.
Or you have intended different school year, school year there, as opposed to your background, like the two that are the larger are background, so like maybe start in summer and they go off. And then a couple of.
Got it. Any other questions? Any other roll call please?
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I need to abstain on check number five three two zero as there is a potential that something may be just. Mrs. Wagner, any, anything you have to add for transportation V E T? There's nothing on there. Nothing?
No, we don't have any answers. No, there's nothing there.
Okay, good. Alright, move on to the good cause. Community reports have been distributed, quite fun, so there's a distributed discussion on school funding. All pretty familiar with where we stand on that, which is, we're not really sure.
How do you know the answer?
But it's, it's certainly, it's certainly been a positive, we think, so we can see a little bit. Anybody else have updates on school funding, wanted to add?
I was gonna say, we should, after ten, there is no good policy. Probably shouldn't have holes in it separate because we really wanted to do it right and now it's unspent over there.
I think that is a good point for me sharing.
Exactly.
It's a meeting, but we could go across the way to our retreat with Donnis and Coffee.
Coffee, where are you gonna retreat to? Alright, after the time clock, there's no discussion on retreat either, so. Anyone have anything else to add? The only thing I want to add to the foundation of Danville's golf funding is September twenty fourth, you're all personally invited. Like, you can say you're paid for, it's like you're invited. It's a good, it's a good time. You can come for golf, you can come for just a dinner and they got like a tricky trade. Auction, line auctions, a bunch of stuff to do, so it's always a fun time. September twenty fourth, yep. Any other good cause?
Nope. I'd just like to say how much nicer the internet is now with. With ours on YouTube, so.
You mean this D link router, doesn't that have any point here? Um, alright, it is ten twenty six, I will open up for public comments. And when it's ten twenty seven, so I'll close public comment section at ten twenty seven, saying.
Will we adjourn?
Oh, hold on, we don't need you for executive, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Wu, adjourned. Second, Mrs. Wagner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight, eight days? No, any objections? No. Alright, we are adjourned at ten twenty seven.